Madam Clerk? I would like to call back to order the Newport Beach City Council meeting moving into regular session. Could we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report? Moving forward, I'm going to ask Councilman Petros if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and ask you to remain standing as the invocation is provided by Councilman Curry.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Our Father in God, at this time of Thanksgiving, we, your children of Newport Beach, gather together with much to be thankful for. You have indeed blessed our community in many and bountiful ways. Help us, Lord, to be worthy of Your grace and worthy of Your bounty. Help us always to share with those of us less fortunate, to work hard to make this a better city and a better country, for it's in Your name we pray. Amen.
We will be beginning the meeting this evening with a presentation related to our Arts Council, and I believe that Rita Goldberg is going to be the one that will lead off on this. Rita, if we could have you come up?
Yes, Arlene Greer.
I'm sorry. Arlene Greer.
Rita's back east. Her father's ill, so I'll be taking her place this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Council Policy I-10 recognizes the importance of promoting culture and the arts within the city and establishes a reserve fund for culture and arts. The sum of $40,000 is provided annually for specific cultural or artistic planning projects as approved by our City Council. The City Arts Commission has the responsibility to review all programs and request for supports of the arts groups. They provide recommendations for funding to the City Council, who approves them later. Through the administration of annual cultural arts grants, the City of Newport Beach distributes funds to arts organization programming to the Newport Beach community. This year, we have seven recipients of the arts grants, and they are the following. And I would like to introduce Tim Heatherdine, City Director, who will help me with the checks. Thank you.
Tonight's recipients are...
Is this kind of like the Academy Awards?
Yes. Shall I do?
Whatever. Baroque Music Festival, whose representative is Pat Brill. If we could have the representatives from the organizations come on up for the...to get their check, that would be great. Explorer Ocean, Tom Pollak, who is the representative. The Festival Ballet, Salva Ruzkala, and/or Terry Schmidt. Newport Beach Film Festival is also recipient. Jenny Bucaro from the Orange County Museum of Art.
And Director Todd Smith.
From the South Coast Repertory Theater. Jim Goss. And Michael Upward of the Southland Opera.
Congratulations.
Now, are you all going to race over to the flag and get a picture?
Good idea.
All right.
Probably good if the mayor was in there, too, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to jump in there.
You expect me to walk? Oh. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, sorry. Now, are you all going to race over to the flag and get a picture?
Good idea.
All right.
Probably good if the mayor was in there, too, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to jump in there.
You expect me to walk? Oh. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, sorry.
Settle down.
All right.
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements on matters which council members would like place on a future agenda.
Councilwoman Deagle.
Up along Bristol Street by the 73, there's quite a few gas stations and mini-marts, and it's real convenient to the 73 freeway. And the police recently had a good bust up there, and what happened was there was a man and woman transporting a car full of high-powered assault rifles and ammunition throughout the city. And the police pulled over a Dodge Caravan that had expired license tags, and while it was leaving a gas station up by Bristol and Irvine Avenue... Some of you may have used that gas station before. And inside were two people, Andrew Carriell of 42 of Banning and Heather Garrell, 30 of Ucaipa. And they found out the driver was driving on a suspended license and on probation. They searched the car. They found seven AK-47 rifles, six 30-round high-capacity magazines, two rounds of magazines, two 10-round magazines, and more than 350 rounds of 7.62 caliber ammunition. Some of these rifles had been reported stolen in Georgia. Some of them are modified in terms of the barrel length, and all of the guns are modified to fire fully automatically. So we really appreciate...we're very thankful for our police that they were able to identify this vehicle and stop them and apprehend both the people and the weapons. And given that we have Thanksgiving in 48 hours, I know I'm very grateful that I was able to serve a decade on the City Council and grateful that the residents empowered me to serve. And then, secondly, really thankful for the people that work here at the city. It was around a year ago that we had our hearing on contracting out residential refuse. And at the time, I had a walker. I'd had serious spinal injuries from a bicycle accident, and the city clerk picked me up at my home, and I came here and was able to vote, and it was a close vote. And so I just want to thank everyone on the staff for their kindness and for their support during the past year. I've been doing a lot better. I can not only walk, I can walk and chew gum at the same time. So I've had a great recovery. And again, thanks to all my council colleagues, too, for your kindness.
Thank you. Councilman Hen.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Curry.
You know, one of the greatest gifts anyone can give is the gift of life, and we celebrated an event this past week at Hogue Hospital honoring the families of those whose relatives did organ and tissue donations upon their death, that others might live and that others might have a high quality of life. This was a very moving ceremony involving several families in the local area to honor them for the commitment that their loved ones have made to prolong and enhance the lives of others. The Donate Life Organization is going to have a float in the Rose Parade this year, and we signed on behalf of the city a rose that will be a part of that float that will go in Pasadena on January 1st. Hogue provided a great little certificate for the city, and I encourage everyone, if you've not already done so, to sign up with your driver's license to be an organ donor for people in need. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gardner.
We had a great trip around the bay on the ferry. About 50 people showed up, current council members, new council members, and a lot of other people. The Harbor Commission did a great tour, pointing out a number of very interesting sites on the bay, and it was...I hope it was just the first time of many, because it was really enjoyable. Nice way to go around the bay.
Councilman Petros.
Yes, at the last City Council meeting, I mentioned that the...my friends and neighbors in Newport Heights were questioning whether or not they wanted to underground their utilities. Well, on the 19th, we had a community meeting to introduce the notion of undergrounding the utilities in the Newport Heights area, generally bounded by Santa Ana, 15th Street, Cliff, and Irvine. It was well-attended. About 100 to 150 residents showed up. This will be a self-assessment if they choose to do this. So great opportunity for folks to learn more about undergrounding of utilities. Well-attended, and I really just want to thank my neighbors in the Heights for attending and becoming so interested in this. We will continue our outreach with the community to assist them as they move forward on determining whether they want to or not underground utilities. But again, just thankful for the folks in the Heights.
Councilman Selig.
No reports.
Thank you. And I have no reports. Madam Clerk, public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar, items 1 through 19, for discussion. Public comments are invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Counsel... Excuse me. Very emotional what I talk about. Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing to pull, but by the time I recuse myself, you're going to wonder why I bothered showing up tonight. I will recuse myself from items number 6 and 7, road projects which impact Pacific Coast Highway near my home. Number 8, one of the playgrounds is near my home. Number 10 and 14, because of my relationship with the Newport Bay Conservancy, which is involved in these projects, even if only peripherally. And 17, the improvement project there, again, is within 500 feet of my home.
And item number 9, Councilwoman Gardner.
No, they were wrong.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Petros.
I have nothing to pull.
Councilman Selig.
I have nothing, but I have a question for Councilwoman Gardner, since I have to make this motion. 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 17.
8, 10, 14, and 17.
Okay, thanks.
Councilwoman Deagle.
A couple items. On number 10, I just wanted to note, this is really a good thing, that we're going to be diverting creek, some creeks with problem constituents into the sanitation line. So instead of it going into the bay, it's going to go into the sewer line. So that's a good thing. And then on item 14, I just wanted to be sure that we are adopting what we discussed at the study session, and that is that the contract...when the council approves the contract with Irvine Ranch Conservancy, then that will also begin the planning process for the RRMP.
What we are doing is dropping the language in the last of that sentence.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Hen.
I have nothing to pull, but did want to note my recusal on items number 7 and 19, as I have a consulting relationship with a business in Vialito Plaza, and in an abundance of caution, want to recuse.
Councilman Curry.
No items to pull, but on the advice of this City Attorney, I'm going to register a recusal on item 10, because I sit on the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors.
And I have nothing to pull. I will be recusing myself on item number 6 and on item number 7, because of owning property within 500 feet of Pacific Coast Highway. And I would just have one quick question on item number 8. With the renovation of playground equipment, obviously, that's not complete removal and replacement, but it is renovation of those pieces needing renovation, correct?
Correct, all except for Spyglass Hill Park. That one, we're going to do a complete new playground set in there. The other ones are just pieces, retrofits.
All right, thank you. All right.
Okay, Ed, this is your big moment.
It's a test. Okay, I'll move approval to consent calendar items 1 through 19, with item number 14 being amended as stated during the study session, noting a recusal by Councilmember Hen on item number 19, recusal by Councilman Curry on item number 10, recusal by Mayor Hill on 6 and 7, recusal by Councilmember Gardner on 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, and 17.
And a recusal by Hen on number 7.
I knew I was going to miss one.
Sorry to get good help.
So noted.
All right. We have a motion. All right, we have a motion, a second. At that point in time, I would like to open it up for public comment on the consent calendar. Is anyone that would like to speak on an item on the consent calendar, items 1 through 19?
Justin Cox. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Deagle's concern...well, support of the item to divert the urban runoff. I think it's very important for the bay and for the water quality, so it's good to hear that the city is moving in that direction. And also, really appreciated on the consent calendar, the items, working with the restoration of the habitat areas. It's a big deal. It's a lot of city staff time, but it helps all the residents with the work that's being done to improve the city through restoration projects. And I wanted to thank the city and the staff for all the work that they're doing on those. And I appreciate that, you know, a lot of time and effort has gone into it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on an item on the consent calendar? We're only taking positive comments tonight, by the way.
Yes. Just... Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. With regard to item 14, which we've heard mentioned several times, this is a contract with the New Irvine Ranch Conservancy for preparation of a resource and recreation management plan for Big Canyon, for the Big Canyon restoration area. The staff report seems to have been carefully prepared under the assumption that the Irvine Company was going to be paying for this through $169,000 coming from a settlement agreement, at least as I read the staff report. And the recommendation before the council is to strike the language and go ahead with it anyway. I understand we have kind of a special relationship with the Irvine Company, and perhaps it's a matter of indifference whether they're paying for it or we're paying for it, but it would seem to me that the recommendation and perhaps the staff report needs some further refinement, in the sense that if they are not going to be paying for this and we're going ahead with it, do we need a budget amendment to define where the money is coming from? And also, is it clear to any of us what will happen to the settlement money if it does later come through after we've already paid for this ourselves? So those are some questions I have about the motion before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and ask you to please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2014-18, interim ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, allowing A-frame signs in Balboa Village commercial zoning districts. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Madam Clerk, public comments on non-agenda items?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone that would like to make public comments on an item not on the agenda? Please come to the microphone. At your pleasure.
My name is Bob McCaffrey. I live at 1410 South Bayfront. I'd like to thank the council for not making a decision on the pay raises. I think that should be decided by the next council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Justin Cox again. Just have one minor issue that I'm trying to work with city staff on. It's a maintenance issue of the irrigation system at the Upper Bayview area, where, next to the city park, the city and the county have various relationships, maintaining a good portion of the Bayview area near Fletcher Jones, the Marriott, sort of in that direction. And I give the city council members a packet with pictures and a summary. I'm going to try to be working with staff this...between now and the next council session, but I don't want to go through the whole PowerPoint presentation. Looks like we've got a lot of people waiting for specific items, but I appreciate the council's consideration of the sort of minor maintenance and repair issue so we can get the irrigation going. There's a lot of volunteer hours going to planting and other items to make sure that the bay is a special place that people can enjoy, and the support of the city in those efforts is greatly appreciated because it helps all the city residents and also its visitors and improves...keeps this special place for time to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I don't know if this is a positive comment or not, but I think it's always amusing to see governments like people, myself included, make resolutions to do good things and then promptly forget what they just proclaimed they were going to do. However, with governments, that can lead to an awkward uncertainty as to what the actual public policy is. An example of this is the selection of the city's mayor and mayor pro tem, which the city charter has long said is expected to happen only at a meeting where new council members are seated, which typically happens every two years. However, at a special meeting in 1984, the outgoing council proclaimed a new policy, which is currently called Policy A1, whereby even if there's no problem with the mayor, he or she is supposed to be replaced every year. Yet for the next four years after that, that council resolutely ignored their own policies that they had just established. More recently, in December of 2010, recognizing that the December meeting had become largely ceremonial, and it was apparently felt that there's a need to get away early for a post-council meeting party. A predecessor of the present council held a special business meeting for that month, at which it was proclaimed that there would be a modified open-meeting policy in which in the even-numbered years, which is what we are in this year, the regular meeting for December would start at 4:00 in the afternoon. However, ignoring its own directive, the regular meeting, held about a week later, started at 5:00, and in 2012, it started at 6:30. And in both cases, the city's regular business was considered and voted upon by the old city council before the newly-elected council members were seated. In view of all this historic uncertainty, I would think it would be helpful for the public to know if there is going to be a single council meeting in December this year, what hour it will start at, and if the seating of the new council is going to be the first or the last item on that agenda. Thank you.
Would staff like to comment?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and council members. To answer Mr. Mosher's question, the intent right now is to have a single meeting. We might try and start at 6:00 instead of 7:00, but I need to check with the incoming council members as well, or a representative or two of them. Don't want to violate the Brown Act. And that...but there's no business plan for that meeting, except for some recognition of the council members going off the council, and that's a chance for them to make some remarks, and then to step down, and then the new council steps up and is sworn in and takes their place. They make comments as well, but there's no business plan beyond that...sorry, beyond selecting the new mayor at that time and the mayor pro tem. And that's as we understand it today here on Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
You left off the dance of the chairs.
There is the dance of the chairs, yes. The council members get to pick where they would like to sit. That is, if they follow the tradition that has been set previously.
Anyone else in the public that would like to comment on something not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go to oral reports from the City Council on committee activities. Councilwoman Deagle.
I have none.
Councilman Hen.
Just one report. This is for the Finance Committee meeting that was held on Monday, November 17. It was quite a substantive agenda at that meeting. We received a report from staff regarding rate study results for the wastewater rates for the city and concluded with a recommendation to council to make the changes in our wastewater rates in accordance with...
rates in accordance with staff's recommendation. That will be presented to the newly-seated council sometime after December the 9th, I imagine in January. Staff did a good job on that report, and we had a good discussion, and I am comfortable the decision, the recommendation at least, is a good one. We also considered the preliminary financial results for the city's fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, and I'm very pleased to report, and I'll have a couple of comments more on this later, that the city, in fact, declared a $10.2 million operating surplus for that fiscal year then ended. This continues a longstanding tradition whereby the city has been able to complete its operations in each fiscal year with a surplus. $10.2 million, of course, is a significant number, and it remains then to be seen exactly how that surplus will be designated and committed going forward. But as I say, I'll have some comments about that a little later in the agenda. And then we considered an update of the facility's financial plan. This is the primary tool by which the city analyzes its decisions on when and how much and which of its facilities need to be rebuilt. And it is an excellent financial planning tool. I've seen lots of financial planning tools in my career. This is one of the best. It's been an award-winning tool that the city has been lauded for in the past. We use it very regularly and very diligently. It was a good time to update that financing plan because we do have a changeover in council as it relates to the election, and this latest analysis will provide a baseline for that council to then work from. I'm pleased to report that the facility's financing plan shows that we have the ability to replace all of the city's key facilities, complete the parks that are under construction, the various revitalization projects that are in concept and in actuality moving forward, as well as projects like a potential new West Side Community Center, et cetera. We're able to complete all of those projects within the city's capacity without any further debt undertakings. In other words, all of it will be for cash. That's a considerable amount of work over the next 20 to 30 years, and we do not envision any further debt operations to support those requirements. Lastly, we considered the, not quite lastly, we considered the update of the Calpers Pension Plan actuarial reports. These are the actuarial reports for the most recent report that is available, which is as of June 30, 2013. And it's unfortunate that Calpers takes so long to complete those reports, but they do, and so we have to deal with what we get. That report shows that there is an unfunded actuarial liability of $257 million for the city, inclusive of both the miscellaneous and public safety plans. We considered at the Finance Committee then what to do about that and arrived at a conclusion. We have made a recommendation to council that it take action to do a new fresh start, it's called a fresh start, that will, in fact, if adopted by council, amortize that liability over a period of 19 years and completely extinguish it over that period, which is 11 years shorter timeframe than the maximum mandated by the state of California. This is on the agenda for later this evening, and I'll have more to comment about that then. As it relates to the last agenda item, we also had an update on the implementation of the new, the city's new enterprise resource plan. That's geek speak for basically the system, the basic system by which the city runs itself in terms of producing financial statements, making payroll, and human resources, and all of those sorts of things. It is a major undertaking for the city, and if all goes well, none of you in the public will ever know we did it, even though it is such a huge undertaking for staff, especially the finance staff. So, this, the completion of this project will continue the city's ability to run faster, smarter, and smaller in terms of its overall staff while still providing a high level of service to our citizens. It's a key building block component for our ability to do that. So it was a very substantive meeting. I, it's my last meeting as chairman of the Finance Committee. I want to thank my co-members of that committee, Councilmember Curry and Councilmember Petros, each of whom have brought great expertise and insight to the workings of that group, as well as thanks to city staff, our finance director, Dan Matashevitz, and Steve Montano is a deputy director, and others in the finance department who have done a wonderful job doing all the hard work for which we at council sometimes take credit. So, thank you very much. That's it. Thank you. Councilman Curry.
Do you have a report?
Councilwoman Gardner.
I have no report, but I do want to say that the city has gained greatly from Mike's presence with all his financial background, so that aspect will certainly be missed as well as others.
Councilman Petros.
I have no report.
Sellige.
Just one quick one. On December the 3rd, the General Plan LCP Implementation Committee is going to meet at 12:30 in the Crystal Cove Room. That's in bay number three.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening. With that, we will move on to public hearings. Item number 20.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Hill, members of the council. This first public hearing item is for a very comprehensive program for Balboa Village related to its parking, both in the commercial district and within the residential neighborhoods. Principal Planner Jim Campbell is going to provide an overview of the five different components that comprise the overall program.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to kind of go through the implementation efforts. We're getting to the finish line here, almost to the finish line on most of the programs. They came from the Balboa Village Master Plan that was adopted by the city council back in 2012. Want to touch base on a little bit of the public outreach and how far we've come. Back in 2011, we started the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and they appointed a Citizens Advisory Panel, which had monthly meetings, and that resulted in the Balboa Village Master Plan. Master Plan has parking strategies, other revitalization strategies for Balboa Village specifically, and tonight we're going to be talking specifically about the parking A lot of the parking strategies were also discussed at length with the Balboa Village Advisory Committee. That was spearheaded by Councilmember Hen and Mr. Petros, who were also involved with us, had monthly meetings, and discussed and debated the various initiatives that we'll go over here momentarily. Planning Commission, city council, both conducted study sessions on this. The council saw this last in September, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing on one component of that, and that's the overlay district for the commercial area, and I'll get touch base on that right now. Just to give the geography of the various areas, in orange, you've got the Balboa Village. This is a commercial area. There are some residential properties in there as well, but it's basically A Street on the east and Adams Street on the west. Then, there's a parking management district and a parking benefit district planned, and I'll describe those in more detail momentarily. And the area in yellow is the area to the west of Adams Street, and it goes all the way to Seventh Street on the western end, and you'll notice that line down the middle. And this area here is really an area that we're planning a resident parking permit program, or an RP3 as we've coined it, where it would be an overnight program and where permits would be required to park overnight, and that would hopefully then push people who parked overnight into the residential, sorry, into the commercial area to the east. As you can see, it covers the island and the mooring areas directly adjacent to it. More detail on that first program, when you read the staff report, you'll notice there's, you know, four ordinances and seven resolutions, so it's, I've tried to organize it in five different programs, so they're all related. So I'll step through each of the various programs. Again, the first one is that resident parking permit program. This is, really comes, stems from the residents' own desire to try to manage the parking in their neighborhood because they're affected by parking from the commercial district. Again, Adams Street to Seventh Street covers Bay Island and the moorings. And then there's a two-phased approach, and that was that line down the middle I mentioned. The first phase would be Island Avenue to Adams, and that would include the island, Bay Island, and the mooring area. And the second phase would be Island Avenue to Seventh Street. So it's a parking permit program. There really would be no priority for anyone to park in the area, but it would allow you to park in that area without receiving any kind of violation or citation. The proposal is from 4:00 PM to 9:00 AM daily. We could issue up to four annual permits per household, $16 per permit. There would be up to six guest passes, one for each day, and enforcement would be done by our existing license plate recognition program. What we envision here is an online permitting system where people could buy the permits, and then the license plates would be uploaded, and then obviously if it was in the system, they wouldn't receive a citation that evening. Now, this particular program will require a review and approval by the Coastal Commission, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And this particular program is really the one that garnered the most debate with the BEVAC, the advisory committee. We heard a variety of different comments stemming from the area is too large, the hours aren't appropriate, and the cost of the permits. There were some who felt that they shouldn't have to pay for a permit to park on the street. So, that program is the first program. If there's any questions, I can answer them now if you like. We can get into a little more detail, or I can go through the whole presentation. It's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor. All right, moving on to the second program. This is for the Balboa Village Parking Management, and this is that orange area that I showed you on the very, on the map. It's really Adams Street to A Street, and establishes a parking management overlay, so it really changes the zoning of the property for the purpose of changing the parking rules. And the biggest change would eliminate the off-street parking requirement for most commercial uses. Maintains existing off-street parking facilities, although if you wanted to remove it, you could go through a discretionary process and possibly remove the parking. Allows shared use of parking, which we really haven't done in the past, although informally it occurs, as you know, quite often. But it would formalize those types of arrangements where the business could actually then lease parking from another space who doesn't need it. It also suspends an existing and future in-lu parking fees. We have an in-lu parking program. Nine businesses in this area take advantage of that. Revenues are about $13,000 a year. There are a variety of, there's, I think, 22 citywide. But what this would do is it would suspend that program in this particular area, that it really just wasn't enough revenue to be generated to be overly meaningful in the overall scheme of parking management here.
Jim, we received a letter about the shared parking, and I think, as you say, it allows for shared use of parking, but it doesn't mandate.
Yes.
There's, the writer was under the impression that the city was going to go in and say, "You will share," and that is not the case at all.
That's correct. It would allow shared arrangements. It also would allow maybe the city to go in and lease parking lots and make them available to the public if the owner wanted to, but it wouldn't mandate anything. All right, moving on to the third program, and this is the Parking Benefit District. And what this is, is it really just is a fence, if you will, around Balboa Village, just to park the commercial area. And what, it's just a revenue reserve. And what we're doing here is we're mending, we have two existing reserves called the Off-Street Parking Reserve and the Neighborhood Enhancement Reserve, and those would be maintained, although we would discontinue funding, and the funds that are there would be used for the purpose that they're already designated. And the one resolution this evening for you to consider is proposed funding of this new district, and what we're proposing is 100% of the non-tidlands-related revenues, which is approximately $347,000 per year, would go into this new reserve. And what it would do would be funding enhancements or other supplemental services for that particular area. And the amendment would suggest that all of these types of uses, streetscape improvements on public and private property, beautification projects, a commercial facade improvement, transit pedestrian and bike infrastructure, wayfinding signing, parking, extraordinary maintenance, transportation mobility, parking, and so on in administration. So this is just kind of an outline of the summary of the purpose of this particular amendment. Now, I think the council could look at the funding mechanisms, the policy decision, how much to put in there. They could do it through the budgeting process, but the resolution that's before you this evening would allocate 100% of the non-tidlands parking revenues for this area. Moving on to Program Four, this is only changing parking fees. Currently on the streets, we charge $1.50 per hour, and the proposal before you is to, in the non-peak season, and I'm going to go ahead and tell you, the peak season and the non-peak season were kind of established in working with the Coastal Commission when we went and got pay stations installed in the Balboa Pier Lot. And so we're, to be consistent with that, we're using those terms. Non-peak season, October through April. Peak season is May through September. So the changes in the rates, or the fees, are in the non-peak season on the streets, $1 per hour for the first two hours and $1.50 thereafter, so we're reducing the rates. What that will do is help turn over on those parking spaces and incentivize their use as well, because they're, you know, when we have a lower parking rate, hopefully it'll be used more in the off-season. During the peak season, the rates actually would go up, $2 per hour for the first two hours and $2.50 thereafter. And what this would do is having the two-tiered rates, it would be, after two hours, you definitely want to try to move your car, and so it would hopefully turn over those spaces. And going from a, going to a two-hour system was really done in consultation with our parking consultant, Nelson Nygaard, who felt that that was a more appropriate time period for the types of visits into the district. And that would be the changes to the on-street parking fees. In the off-street parking fees, we've got five parking lots down there. Currently, we charge $1.50 per hour. Now, the Balboa Pier Lot is a little more complex. It has different rates for the holidays, or much higher rates for the holidays. But what we're planning to do here is to change the non-peak rates to $1 per hour. And the purpose of doing this is, is to go ahead and lower that fee so we get people to park there more, and bring people down to the area, and help bring visitors back into the area and shop in the shops and visit our attractions. And the peak season rates, we wouldn't change them at all. And so this particular rate change would be consistent with our coastal development permit for the rates that have already been established at the Coastal Commission. And that's Program Four. Program Five are other permits and parking validation. Part of the discussions with our, with the BEVAC is to create a voluntary parking, employee permits. What we'd like to do is to get the employees to park in designated areas rather than parking in the residential areas where it's for free. And the hope is, is that with a lower fee, you know, obviously they could park in the city-designated spaces at a reduced cost than what they would otherwise pay if they parked there. It would be a voluntary system. The peak season designated area would be along the Balboa Boulevard Center median, west of Medina. And the non-peak, it would be in the Balboa Pier parking lot, which in the parking study shows we have plenty of parking during the non-peak season. So the hope is, is again, we can get, we can try to start controlling where the employees park. Resident permits. What this would be is that the residents could come down and visit Balboa Village, $16 per year would buy them a parking pass, and they can park in the village and park there for free. And this is to incentivize, you know, more visits by the residents down into the area and support the businesses there. Last item is the parking validation program, and this was really a request from the Balboa Village Business Owners Association. They'd like to see a validation program, and so we've got that proposal drafted for your consideration tonight. What we're proposing, staff is proposing, that this validation be done and paid for by the participating businesses so that the revenue stream that we'd otherwise achieve would be maintained.
Jim, definition of residence there?
City residents.
Citywide?
Citywide, yes.
Not just Balboa Village?
Yes.
So Balboa Village people that are in the parking district, by staff report, would be paying $16 a year for their residential parking permit, and then another 16 to be able to park in the commercial district?
If they wanted to do that, yes. If they live close enough, I would assume they would walk and wouldn't need the permit, but there would be a $16 per car in the residential area nearby, and if they wanted to visit the district and not pay at the meters, they could pick this one up here. I do need to add that this parking, the resident permits would really be, is that a non-peak season? It's only in the non-peak season. So it wouldn't be in the peak season, because during the peak season, during the summer months, you know, we really don't have enough parking to go around, and all of these permits really don't guarantee a space on the street. It just, obviously the ability to not have to pay at the meters. And that's the summary and overview of the four, five different programs. And so we've got four ordinances and three resolutions which implement all of this for your consideration, and this is the next step. So if there's any questions on the programs, I'd like to go over those, and then we can kind of talk about some of the next steps.
Yeah, Jim, there was, in our BEVAC committee meetings, there was a lot of talk about this plan for months that we were reviewing it and the data that's...
plan for months that we were reviewing it and the data that supported it. But there was also the desire to have evaluation. There is an annual evaluation of all of these elements, is there not?
Yes. What we plan to do is to monitor all of these programs. What we're really trying to do is modify behaviors and where people park. And so we need to watch how this works and see where people are parking and see if there's any unintended consequences, and then make adjustments as we go forward, because there might be some that we don't particularly like, and we want to come back and fix it. So, and that's the bottom item down here, monitoring on this next slide. It's really, it's under the heading of the RP3, the Resident Program, but we're gonna have to monitor all of these different programs to see if there's any unintended consequences.
Well, staff will. The citizens, the residents in the area will have the opportunity to give their input. The council will weigh in. This is not something set in stone. If it's acted on tonight, we will in fact be able to look at it, modify it, address changes where they're necessary after implementing it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to kind of wrap up, I want to point out that the parking meter fees and the resident parking permit program are projects that are going to require Coastal Commission review, so it's not something that we're going to be able to implement overnight. It may take several months, and it might come back maybe a little bit different than what we send to them tonight. And so, just, as I know there's a lot of interest in the resident permit program, a lot of people want it immediately. We've gotten a lot of feedback on these little business cards here indicating support as well. Again, we do have facts in support of the findings for it, but ultimately, once the Coastal Commission approves it, obviously, we have to modify, create a permit system, an online permit system that would create accounts that you can purchase the permits easily and very conveniently. We obviously need to do a lot of public outreach and education and open enrollment, I call it, in this one, you need to get those permits and get the signs up and phase in the enforcement. Obviously, we want to do warning notices before we start doing any citations. We want to definitely roll this in slowly so it's not a huge immediate impact to the community, and so we want to do that, and obviously monitoring it. Again, I did a brief overview, and I'm happy to go over any other details that you might want to have fleshed out this evening, but that really does conclude my presentation and have to answer questions.
Okay.
Councilman Henn?
Thank you. Let me just make a few brief conceptual overview comments, and then we can throw it open to public comment. This is Part Two of a comprehensive and integrated plan. In Part One, council approved a plan for wayfinding signs, design guidelines, landscaping of the public right-of-ways, and the facade improvement program. This Part Two now provides, in effect, the funding mechanism and governance mechanisms that allow for Part One to move forward. Part Two is in itself is an integrated plan. It's a lot to throw at council and the public all at once, but we felt that it was necessary to do that because all of these parts are interdependent, and one, or the elimination of one will affect others in the plan, so you have to look at it all together. The reservation of parking fees for use in this area, there's two aspects of that. The first aspect is that largely what we're talking about is redirecting fee generation that is already reserved for the peninsula through these first two reserves that Jim spoke of that are going to now go inactive, except to spend the money that's left in them. So it's not like we're instituting a new fee here, or a new reservation system for parking fees. What we're doing is reorganizing and redirecting some of the fees that we already reserve for spending on the peninsula. And secondly, the fee revenue of $350,000 to $400,000 a year largely makes the Balboa Village Master Plan self-funding over a period of five or six or seven years. And we have an overall master plan that has been costed out at the range of around $3.5 million. I spoke earlier of the facility's financing plan and the fact that we've organized ourselves to be able to execute that plan without any further borrowing on the part of the city. One of the elements in that plan is the Balboa Village Master Plan, and it's in there for the whole cost, but a large portion of that cost won't have to be borne by the facility's financing plan reserve because we have parking revenue that will fund it. The residential permitted parking, or RP3, as we call it by slang, the size of that fee at $16 is exactly how much the Newport Island residents pay for their fee, and by ordinance, others that have the ability to have residential parking permits, $16 per year, per permit. And so I think it's equitable that that fee be set at what others are already paying for a similar, what they perceive to be, benefit. I recognize that this plan, although it's been through a considerable amount of public outreach and study and public comment, not all of the comment has been favorable. I imagine we'll hear some comments that are not favorable to this tonight, but please understand, there has been a considerable effort here to listen to and hear the public. That's not to say that everyone's opinion was in fact adopted as they wished in the final plan. That's the nature of public governance here. So with that, I'll shut up and leave it to my council colleagues for any other comments or questions, and then, of course, we'll hear from the public.
All right, any other council comments or questions? Seeing none, then I would like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the audience would like to make comment on Agenda Item Number 20. Please come on down. Can I see a show of hands of how many would like to speak on this item? All right, if we could come on and line up in the front row down here, that would help us. We only have the room running through breakfast tonight, so. All right, please begin.
Thank you. Dom Torgeman, apartment building owner at 306 East Balboa, in the proposed RP3 zone. When I was notified of this, it seems like there was a constituency that was overlooked, and that is the apartment building owners and their maintenance crews. If this were to be established, we are not considered residents, and hence it would be very difficult for us to park for legitimate purposes, to turn units, improve units, check out the property. I, as an owner, would love to come on Saturday nights at 11:00 or 12:00 midnight and see if the party situation is nonexistent, for example. And with this type of parking proposal in place, it doesn't seem to allow me, as a landlord, or my maintenance crews, to come to the property whenever we so desire. So I think that there may be an ability, or hopefully there's an ability, for the council to consider the interests of landlords in the area, maybe akin to what Program Five has established with a employee permit system. So for employees of landlords and landlords in the RP3 zone, something to allow us to buy a permit so that we can easily access our properties, maintain property values, maintain safety, and oversight of the properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Carl Duro. I'm a summertime and whenever I want to come down to Newport resident. I live in Los Angeles, but I have a summer home at 322 Montero. And I don't mind the fees, but what I object to is the inconvenience. I have a lot of friends in the neighborhood. I've lived there since 1988, or in Newport, been since '88, and there's a lot of older residents there who might not be computer-literate or savvy to, you know, found out that this was all done through the computer, and it's easy to get your permit and so on. But I am a landlord in Santa Monica, and what they use up there are hang tags. And I think that hang tags would be a far better idea, get each owner of a house, or each tenant of an apartment, would get up to four hang tags or whatever was allotted. I'm not opposed to, you know, I think four is a fair amount, and that would be a great thing. I am handicapped, and I do have a handicap tag, and I will be using my handicap tag, and I might not license my, you know, put my license down as one of the residents there. I don't think I need to. And from what I understood now, reading all of this, I felt that this is what you're going to have, is hang tags. And then I found out it's this Google car that comes down and sees what kind of, what people have permits and so on. They're not going to be able to read my handicap tag. That's what I kind of infer through the thing, that they're not going to read hang tags, regular hang tags. So I would really, I would like to see hang tags being used there rather than the, and if people want to use their license numbers, that's fine, too. But I think hang tags should be an alternative. I do have three children, and we have many cars in our family, and we can't get the four on the, basically, the four that are allotted to you, and I think that's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Council members, my name is Mary Ann Zippy. I live at 420 East Bay Avenue. And I want to thank staff for all the work they've done on the parking situation because there are a lot of problems commercially. However, I feel we have a problem on the residential aspect of it. Newport Beach government stands to make over a quarter of a million dollars, or between, as Councilman Henn said, between a quarter of a million and $400,000 in revenue per year on the resident permit program. We residents will be forced to buy a permit in order to park in front of our homes. Anytime people are forced to contribute to the government, that's a tax. Yet city officials are selling this program as a benefit to residents. So we're being, if you'll pardon the cliche, grubered, just like the architect of Obamacare famously hid the fact that the Affordable Care Act was a tax. However, this tax only applies to seven blocks of Newport Beach, not the rest of the city, and thus also discriminates against those residents in that area. Gruber pretended transparency, and so did the government of Newport Beach when they claimed that the permit program was approved by residents. Municipal Code, Chapter 1268, governs permit parking and establishes that the majority of the residents adjacent to the proposed zone must desire, agree to, or request preferential parking privileges, and further, that at least 50% plus one must sign a petition requesting the permit district. I have neither seen nor signed such a petition. What I have seen is the government's 2012 survey claiming that majority of respondents want permits, but it also conceded that only 36% of so-called residents responded to the survey, which is hardly a majority. On closer examination, we find that actually only 10% of resident owners responded to the survey. 90% of respondents were absentee owners or renters who probably are no longer residents. The survey left out that a parking place was not guaranteed even though you paid for it, and that the price could go up at any time. Falsehoods, discrimination, lack of transparency, this council needs to step aside and let the new council address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? Please come on down.
Good evening, Mayor. I want to thank you all for your service for this city. I've served this country. I've bled for this country, and I was born in Hoag Hospital. I've lived here for 54 years. I want to reiterate what the lady just said. We've not seen or signed any petition. I lived at 216 East Bay Avenue. So I want to thank you for your effort, but we'd like a little bit more transparency. We would like to understand why the people that have been born here and that have been raised here are forced to do the things that we've never really been asked to do. I would fully enforce anything that helps Newport Beach, but please be honest in your actions and how you address the people that try to serve you as you try to serve us. So tonight, I'm asking you to please, I'm a chief operations officer of Construction Enterprise, and I know the construction of this project is going to weigh out budget what you've already exercised. So I'm asking you to really analyze what you're saying. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to our country. Anyone else want to speak on this? Please come on down. Anybody else after this lady? Don't let him scare you. Come on down.
My name is John Huetink. I live in the, oh, excuse me.
I don't mind. I listened patiently. I didn't hear any mention of "we" down on Balboa Peninsula Point. I will pay what's necessary, but I need a parking space during the summer.
Leslie, can you identify yourself, please?
Pardon me?
Can you tell us your name, please, Leslie?
Oh, I'm sorry, Leslie Miller, Balboa Peninsula Point. And I come mainly in the summer, as the other man did. I really don't have parking. I have one garage space, and then there's no parking in the summer. I think Mr. Henn is of the opinion that it's seasonal, and I think that term was used, or maybe weekends. It really is the entire summer, and it prevents us from having lunch guests or family members. I just, I ask that we not be so short-sighted as to think we can contain the parking within a program as outlined, without any idea that there's going to be growth. The peninsula is not going to get bigger. There are going to be more people on the same area. The only way that I see that we could somehow manage it into the long term would be through off-peninsula parking. And for example, beachgoers, probably most people would be able to carry what they need to go to the beach under their arms or whatever, maybe $5 a day, $20 a day, off-peninsula parking. Otherwise, it's just going to be bigger and bigger and bigger, and guess where they go? They come down to the point, the end, the only place where there's free parking. So that'll get tighter and tighter for me. And, you know, it's just not going to, I don't see it as all-inclusive for the point at all. I've suggested on many occasions...
Excuse me, Leslie, just so that we're sure we understand, you would like the permitted parking program to expand, to include the point? Is that what you're saying?
Thank you, Mr. Henn. Yes, I would like, I proposed this first in 2005, 2007, when we did the alley behind the oceanfront houses. And as part of that plan, we had three months of parking on, permit parking for the oceanfront people, the people involved in the alley, the oceanfront and East Ocean Boulevard, one side of East Ocean Boulevard for three months during the construction. It went over three months, so it's about four months. It worked just fine. And the enforcement of that one side can pay for the, you know, the revenues from permit parking for one side can pay for the enforcement officer to enforce that. I think it would go through the Coastal Commission because it's just one side of the street. And it seems to me that it's very, very logical. Otherwise, somebody like me, okay, no parking for anybody other than my one little garage space. People get up at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning trying to put their car out in the street to get, so they can have one guest. That's about it. This morning, today, on my way here, my daughter is down by the library, and I'll just say I had to park in the alley just to deliver a letter just a few minutes ago. I think it's frankly naive to think that, you know, a very well-outlined plan that can contain the number of cars that apparently you juggled with will be good for, say, 20 years. Isn't there somebody looking at a 20-year program?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comments. Next, please, sir.
My name is John Huetink. I live at 308 Coronado. I'm in the Phase One area. When this was first presented to me, it was sort of a, presented on the idea that it'll alleviate parking. And I understand that that's not the concept at all. It's entirely for to budget improvements, which I'm not against. But I'd like to say that it certainly is not going to change any of the parking problems that we have there in the summertime, especially overnight parking. During the summer, it's so crowded that it's always going to be a problem. Right now, you could go down to my street and park almost anywhere. So it's nothing that's going to alleviate parking, and it's not going, and it's certainly, I don't think it's a safety issue. So I can't object from the... So I can't object from the, from the concept that you're getting funding. I don't care if you charge me $16, but I pay $16 to park overnight, and if I want to go to the next block over, I got to pay another 16 bucks just parking the street. Is that, am I correct? That's what I just heard. And...
Actually, sir, that's not quite correct.
It's just what it sounded like.
The overnight parking permit would be charged for $16 per year for you to park overnight in front of your house. If you wanted to be able to park in the village proper in the commercial area and not pay extra parking costs, you could buy, you don't have to, but you could buy a permit for $16 a year.
So I don't object to improvements. I don't care, the money doesn't sound unreasonable, but it's certainly not going to help the parking situation if that was somebody's, which was presented to me as a concept when this first started.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Schnabel, and I live in the affected area as well. I'd like to recommend that you approve the parking permit program for three reasons. First is consistent with other urban beach communities. Second, it adheres to the recommendations of over half a dozen consultants that the city has hired to deal with parking issues in this area since 1990. And third, it proactively addresses the year-round parking congestion that will likely follow with the success of Explore Ocean and all the revitalization efforts that the city has put into the village. And we are among, I am among a handful of residents who have worked on this issue for more than four years since the city, since the Walker Parking Consultants recommended meters on the residential streets. So I can testify to the fact that we have done our best to contact most of the residents in our area. The fact that some people were not aware is beyond me, but I know the city has conducted surveys, we've conducted surveys, we've knocked on doors, and I have no answer for why some people are new to this issue. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come down and take a seat in the front row so we can keep moving right along. Yes, sir.
W.R. Dillane. I own property in the 300 block of East Balboa since 1965. I brought in an additional 15 cards tonight, gave them to Jim Scott, he's in his hand right there, of people that would have come and spoke in favor of it. We, I have been in trouble for years. No and-if-buts about it. I remember I'm satisfied in the buildings I built, the parking requirements, but I had two vehicles, and I didn't, I played games on the streets. The other most important thing to me is that I have now found records going back to 1993 where there was a recommendation for permit parking in the Balboa Village. 1997, it got off in the Project 2000. And thank us for Councilman Hen when he recommended that we came before when the Economic Development Company or Program was going to put parking meters in front of our houses in the 300 and the 400 block, Coronado and Fernando. We've been out. People have not responded. I only recognize two people that have been before any of the committee meetings, and I'm sure it's disappointing, it has to be, to those volunteers that have been on the committee, the council members, when you see the same old faces over and over and over. I think it's been one heck of a job. This council, thank you. We got this thing on the docket now. The previous council, a couple of members, and all of you for the revitalization of the whole city. It's great, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Hill and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I had not planned to speak on this topic this evening because I consider Michael Hen probably the best councilperson we've had in the peninsula area ever, and I know this project is very important to him and I'd like to see it succeed. But I did get a bit concerned when Leslie came and spoke and said she would like to have the parking permit plan expand down to the Peninsula Point area. With this program, there are winners and losers. If you live on 8th Street on the peninsula where the parking permit plan ends, if a person comes down to surf at the beach, they park there, come back to the car at 5:00, and they have a parking ticket because it's resident-only parking after 4:00 p.m. And then they see the sign and they say, oh, I have to park the next block over. What's going to happen is we have the toothpaste tube is closed, you're squeezing it here. So it's going to go someplace else, so just outside of the parking boundary, all of those people who live there, whatever amount of parking they have now, and there are quite a few months where it stays light until 8:00 p.m. at night. Okay? So everybody who wants to come and use the beach will park down there in front of the home that doesn't have the parking restriction at 4:00. If you expand this down, all the way down to the point, from 8th Street all the way down to the point, it's just going to push everybody further up after 4:00 p.m. Okay? I would like, if I lived in the district, I would be happy to pay 16 bucks to have parking in front of my home for me and my residents only after 4:00 p.m. Okay? But I'm just concerned. So my first thoughts on this was not to say anything, just let it go through and see how it all shakes out, because as Councilman Prentice, as we can, adjusts and makes changes as it goes into practice. But when I hear Councilman Hen say, oh, well, we perhaps can expand it down to the point, please don't.
Just to clarify, I was only trying to clarify what Leslie was saying. I have not proposed, and there is no proposal on the table, to expand permitted parking to the point.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. As somebody who does not live on the Balboa Peninsula, having seen the spotlight shining so brightly on Balboa Village for the last several years, my first comment would be that the Newport Pier McFadden Square area seems to me to be at least as much in need of attention as Balboa Village, yet kind of like Santa Ana Heights, it seems to be the poorest stepchild that doesn't get spoken of. Nonetheless, you have before you, as you heard, four ordinances tonight that have Balboa Village written on them. From what I've heard, these are not emergency ordinances, and this is the introduction of ordinances, which normally means they come back in two or three weeks for a second reading and evaluation. We heard earlier that neither the old nor new council is planning to do any substantive business in December. So I take it the adoption of these, if it happens, will be in January, which I think means the date of adoption in the drafts that are here may need some revision, and the personnel listed may need some. But what really bothers me about this is from the comments, it's people interested in Balboa Village. From the agenda, it's about Balboa Village. From the staff report, it's about that, like you look at Program Three, Parking Benefit District, related to how parking revenues within Balboa Village will be budgeted and spent. But then, to my, and it looked like that when I looked at the clean version of the ordinances, but then I look in here on Pages 73 and 74 at the redlined versions, I see that there's whole paragraphs here that have to do with areas not in Balboa Village at all, where existing parking revenue systems that past councils put in place for the benefit of those areas, including the Canary Village, including the remainder of the peninsula, including West Newport, which we've heard that money would be spent, but if I'm reading the ordinances correctly, those are still active, and parking revenue from those areas is still going into those funds, yet that language is being deleted. So those areas that were benefiting from a similar system, and by the way, past councils thought a reasonable formula was 50% of the parking revenue going for the local benefit. I don't know the logic of why 50% was right. I don't know why the logic of 100% now is right. But it seems wrong to me that when the agenda says all over at Balboa Village, these people in these other areas don't know that their program is being suspended, yet that is what you seem to be talking about tonight, but it's hardly spoken of if I'm reading these pages, 73 and 74 correctly. And I don't think that's right. Thank you.
You?
My name is Howard Hall. I've been a resident of Balboa since 1945 and a property owner since 1960. I've attended almost all the revitalization and advisory committee meetings unless I was sick. Residential parking west of Adams Street was a topic many years ago. The last objective consultant then thought that curbside parking, that was the result of motorists avoiding the parking meters in Balboa, could be subjected to permits. They also stated that the permit could extend as far as Coronado Street. Years later, a committee was formed under the direction of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. The committee was composed of only people favoring a permit system. They drew up a permit district that went clear up to 7th Street. As they surveyed people in this area, the whole idea became more controversial, pitting neighbor against neighbor, so much so that the Central Newport Beach Community Association took away its affiliation with this permit committee. This didn't stop the committee, though. It went on independently, even to the point of sending out cards before city surveys in order to convince people to vote yes. And if voters weren't sure, the committee had phone numbers you could call to be further convinced to vote yes. Nowhere in this process were voters asked if they were affected by people parking overnight to avoid the meters in Balboa. In the meantime, the political forces governing all of this process were kept one-sided, that is favoring the huge permit district reaching all the way to 7th Street. I proposed drawing the line at Medina Way, but it wasn't even discussed, and I would classify it as being ignored. I would give my comments, and then they would just go on. The final proposal even includes Bay Island, which has its own garage that is infrequently used. Instead, they park on Island Avenue as they won't have that far to walk, and you can imagine how the people on Island Avenue feel. If this overly large parking permit district is approved, it will lead to more parking in alleys, which is illegal, by the way, and I mean more parking because it already, there's many illegals, and permits its own problems for residents, presents its own problems for residents. It is a real concern. My major question to anyone on the city council is, why are we who live in East Newport not affected by overnight parking motorists that avoid the meters in Balboa included in the parking district requiring overnight permits?
Thank you, Howard. Anyone that wants to answer that? Yes, sir. You're up.
My name is Alan Maxfield. I live on Island Avenue on the peninsula, and we've been gone for the last five months just to avoid the construction zone down there in the Bay Island Bridge. So a little bit of the parking thing has slipped by me, but my understanding is Island Avenue is included in this permit thing. I talked to, we got back last Tuesday, and I talked to most of the people on our street, and they signed a little petition that they're against it. I don't know anybody that's for it. Like the gentleman before me said, being on Island Avenue, we're the second house from the bridge, and our main problem is not beachgoers, it's the fact that we've got constant construction on the island. We've got the people from Bay Island that have their garage, and they don't use it. And that's, makes it tough on us, or they put their golf carts out there to save spaces. So I can't see that the permit thing would have any benefit at all for anybody on Island Avenue. I mean, if we have friends over, then we don't have a garage or a house that was built in 1908, so we're pretty much SOL on parking on our property. So just to be on note, I am totally against any permit thing that would involve Island Avenue, unless there's some way to force the people on Bay Island to use their garage. But we've talked to them, and that hasn't worked. So anyway, that's my two cents worth.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Further comments by council members? Let me, if you'll just, I want to clear up a couple of things here. So Mary Ann Zippy raised some issues regarding the survey problems and the money. The $350,000 to $400,000 that's been discussed here, that is the parking revenue in the commercial area of the village, not related to the titleings, parking lots. It is not the money that is being raised as a result of the $16 permit fee. I don't know exactly how much money is being raised as a result of the $16 permit fee, but it's a lot less than $350,000, and it's probably not actually even as much as what the administrative cost of the system will be. So, but then Jim or Kim, can you comment? She did raise questions regarding the survey and whether it was, you know, appropriately done, and why didn't she get notified, et cetera. So can you please address the survey issues?
Certainly. The survey went out in December of 2012, or maybe October 2012. It was sent out to about 1,100 households. We got back about 35, a little over 35%, which is a pretty high return rate, and there was approximately a little over 68% of the respondents indicated that they were in support of a program. There was a, there was a good percentage of those who might have, might have changed their vote, I suppose, if the parameters of the program were a little bit different. And I think, but I do believe that that high percentage in favor of a program is a clear support, that a majority of residents in that area do support a program.
Councilmember Hen, I... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm not a big fan of permit parking because of what we just heard. I've got at least three neighborhoods in Grand Amare that would love to have it, and it's an issue. But one of the things that, there were two things that really seemed to justify it in this area. One, you have homes without garages, so that is an issue. And then you had something that you don't have in my area, which is overnight parking for people on the Catalina Flyer and that sort of thing. So it seemed to make a certain sense. But I'm wondering if there has been enough, I mean, to have done a survey two years ago where you got 35% response, that is a good response. But is that a good enough response when you're going to say to people, we're changing the way you park? Shouldn't we go out again now that we have the firm details? I don't know what was exactly presented. Was it simply a permit parking? Was it, this is how it's going to work, it's going to be from 4:00 on, what sort of details there were? But now there's things, I'm just wondering if that, this particular aspect of it shouldn't be readdressed to be sure that there is at least a majority, because yes, you've got 68% saying, a third of the people, 68% of them said it, but you've still got 70% that didn't respond, or not 70%, 60% that didn't respond. So, I mean, we've seen the same faces that have been against it, I understand that as well. And I know that there was some outreach, but I don't know that you've got enough people to say, yeah, we really have support for this permit parking that's really in-depth.
I also question that because, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman, pay first.
I just, I wanted to follow up, Councilman Hen, on the comment you made. If I recollect, the consultant, the parking consultant's original estimate for the permit fees was about double the 16, and in his estimate, that wouldn't have... fees was about double the 16, and in his estimate, that wouldn't have covered the administrative cost. It was as, because we, in our BVAC meetings, came back and said, "Get the permit fee as low as possible," that it came back at 16. So, clearly, that is not a revenue generating effort at all. It will not pay for itself. It will not even cover the costs of administration.
Councilwoman, take it.
Up in my district, East Bluffie area, we have some apartment owners that wanted to do this permit parking Los Amigos area, and I had to carefully look at the code at that time, and it was very clear that it's 50% of residents in the area. It's not 50% of people that respond. It's not like a Prop 218 or something like that. It's 50% plus one of people that reside in the area, and I had figured, because there's a lot of renters, that people potentially were not going to participate at the same level as Aurelia Street, where people did participate and they did vote, and there was clearly a 50% plus one that wanted to do this program. So, I really think that it needs to be carefully tracked, you know, who the residents are, their address, and what their vote is, and it comes to 50% plus one. I mean, it seems as if there's a survey, we have no results here, and I don't think it's an interpretation that it's 50% responded. I think the code is very clear.
So, when it comes down to the code, what the code's Section 1268030 provides is that the findings have to be made to the reasonable satisfaction of the city council. And one of those criteria is that a majority of the residents are basically in support of the preferential parking program. But that's a criteria, and it's up to the discretion of the council to decide whether or not that majority's been reached. What you have before you is, the basis of that is the survey that was performed and responded to.
Councilman Hen.
Just to clarify, on the survey that was done, Jim, I believe there was a certain amount of detail in that survey that people were asked to express an opinion on, and I believe that did discuss the 4:00 PM to-
Yes.
-9:00 AM. What was, in just briefly overview, what was in that survey that described the program?
What was in the survey was actually what was in the Balboa Village master plan, which had all those details, the times and the costs and the area that it would have applied to. What's changed since the survey is actually the cost of the permits have come down a little bit, which was a concern, but that's the basic change between the survey and today.
Councilwoman Dago.
Yes. Maybe people want to discuss the survey more. I had a question on a different topic.
Oh, I was just going to ask, are we voting on this as a package, or you were going to ask for five different votes?
Well, I think you're free to vote on it in whatever manner you decide to, but you could vote on it as a package if that's what the council pleases.
Oh, we could, all right. I was just suggesting maybe we could pull that out and vote on the rest of them and then discuss the permit in more detail or whether you wanted to lay it.
I would ask Councilman Hen to comment on that particular aspect, because before he said it was an all-integrated activity.
Well, it is an integrated set of proposals, but I think council has the discretion to deal with these. They are all separate actions, as far as I'm concerned, and if the council pleases, if it pleases council to vote on one or more of them separately, I'm okay with that.
So, within the subcommittees or the PAC's belief, if some of these were passed and some of them were not, those that were passed would still work?
Well, I think we need to see how the votes come out.
If there are particular provisions that cause concern, then it may need to be altered in more than one document.
My concern, the only part of it, excuse me, that I'm concerned with is the permit parking, do we really have a majority? And that's not, I just don't feel that I've got the information, enough information to be confident that we have. So, that's my concern.
But you're okay on the rest of the proposals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Dago.
I share her position. I also don't see where it's been demonstrated that the majority does support, that the majority of residents do support this. My question deals with a comment made by the member of the public relating to Gruber and hang tags. Can you elaborate on those systems and what's being proposed here? And I share the concern that, you know, anything real computer techy, you sometimes can lose segments of the population.
Certainly. Having a computerized system is one approach, hang tags is another approach, and we could choose either one that would fit the bill. I think having the online system and using the license plate recognition software helps on the enforcement, helps keep our costs down. And we obviously would provide, you know, live people in City Hall here to help people go through that regardless of either approach that we take. But again, it's not set in stone as to which approach it would be. We could use hang tags, we can do the online permitting system, and again, those are some details we could still work out.
So, what is the online system? Someone comes to the city hall, and they give you your license plate, it's entered into a computer. Can you explain the online system?
I can describe what I envisioned it to look like. It would basically be any kind of an online account system that you might have with, you know, an online retailer, where you've got an account, and you can then buy a product, and you're buying a permit, and then you would input information like your license plate number, and you would do an online transaction to pay for it, and you could purchase a ticket, I'm sorry, a guest pass, and select the dates and the number that you wanted and pay for them. So, it'd be relatively simple, online system like you would do any other type of retailer. That's kind of the approach that I would envision. Now, we could do, we could obviously provide services for those folks who might not be very comfortable with that online permitting program, that we can sign them up here in City Hall and walk them through that.
So, that might be good if we could have some option for folks that, because I know, for example, the TCA online payment program has had a few glitches. So, if there can be alternative for people that aren't as literate or as comfortable with a computer.
Absolutely. We can work that in, and hang tags may still be a viable option, and so we would explore whichever one works for the community and helps us keep our administrative costs down.
I guess I have a question. I've heard a lot of comments tonight about process and what I would call specific details. I guess I'd like to hear the intent from the council. What do you think's going to happen if or if not this is passed? I mean, what's going to be the next step if this is passed tonight? Is there enough information here to begin implementation, or is it yet to go back with more study or?
Well, it's got to go through Coastal, for one thing, but go ahead.
Well, we do believe we have enough information for implementation. We do feel we've got the studies to support the conclusions that we've made and the program and how it's been envisioned. So, we would take that information and go to the Coastal Commission and see what we get through that process. We hope that the Coastal Commission will see that information as being valid and allow the program to go forward as designed currently.
Mayor Hill. I would like to hear a motion so we can start to move this in some direction.
Mayor Hill. The, to summarize, the past couple of years that I've spent on BVAC, this whole package of initiatives was originally intended to incent new and innovative development down in the Balboa Village, to create local-serving retail, to create interesting restaurant opportunities and retailing, to revitalize that area. To start that, we did wayfinding, we did design guidelines. But structurally, there was a recognition that the parking in the village itself, not the residential area, but in the village itself, was a hindrance to that redevelopment, to that enhancement of the Balboa Village. So, items Program Two was suggested to say, "Fine, we will remove that impediment to the commercial side, thereby incenting the retailers, the village area, to redevelop and make that area new again." How do you pay for that? Well, the money that you generate from that commercial area stays in the commercial area, hence Programs Three and Four. The Program Five is the glue that puts it all together. The thought was that in so doing, we would be focusing on and enhancing and bringing more people down to the Balboa Village area. And one possible consequence of that was greater parking in the area, and therefore, the committee believed that it would be good to, while we're doing that incentive, that enhancement, that new drive, to protect the residents around the area by implementing the residential permit process. That was the whole intent of the residential permit. It is not a revenue generator. It was intended originally as a protection. My notion is, I'm hearing that there is some concern by my colleagues that there isn't enough support for that within the public, although we have had numerous meetings on this. I agree with that. I'm hearing the same folks that have addressed that issue in those previous meetings. Therefore, what I'd be willing to do is to go back to our original objective, which is to incent new and creative and neighbor-serving enhancements down in the Balboa Village, and I would move Programs Two, Three, Four, and Five.
All right. There's a motion for Programs Two, Three, Four, and Five, and there is a second. Is there any discussion on that particular motion? Councilwoman Dago? No. All right. Then I would ask for a vote. Please vote. Mr. City Attorney, do you make a comment?
I'm just double-checking here. Program Five, the resolution, there is portions of that, I believe, that cover residential, which would be tied to Number One. Is that correct, Kim?
No, they're independent.
Are they independent?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay on voting Two through Five, but I'm presuming we'll also consider Item One separately. Okay.
Prior to reading the votes, I'll read the ordinance titles for Programs Two through Five. Ordinance Number 2014-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting Code Amendment Number CA 2014-001, adopting the Balboa Village Parking Management District Plan and establishing the Balboa Village Parking Management Overlay District. Ordinance Number 2014-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Newport Beach Municipal Code Sections 12.44.025 and 12.44.027, and adding Section 12.44.029 relating to parking funds. And Ordinance Number 2014-22, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach. Councilmember Curry, you need to vote, please. Thank you. Amending Section 12.44.040 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to on-street parking meter fees in Balboa Village, the most carries unanimously 7-0.
Now, Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Now that we've done that, there is now that the, and if the Coastal Commission does in fact concur with those findings, there is now going to hopefully be an encouraged, enhanced, and new-developed Balboa Village area. The overall objective is to bring people down there. The overall objective is to provide local-serving retail so that residents down there can walk into the village and enjoy a meal, enjoy entertainment. But now there is no protection should that enhancement grow to the point where it would outstrip the parking. Okay? And it also means that the Catalina Flyer folks can still park on your streets. I mentioned that we will have an annual review of this, and we can come back in a year and say, "Oh, my gosh, what did we do? Let's institute that RP3 again," if you wish. My suggestion is that we direct staff or the consultant or whomever to go back out and find the 50-plus-one if there is that in the community, and if there's not, we don't do the RP3. And I don't know how to mold that into a motion. I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say about that.
I guess I might add that, as we have discussed this over the last four years, that every time we try to solve a problem in one area, we potentially create a problem in an additional area. And the discussion that took place from the early on is that in achieving what has now been done by vote, there is the prized probability that we will have created an additional problem in the residential area. Therefore, the goal was to address that so that that issue was mitigated, and that was in fact the purpose of Plan, Program Number One.
It was, and I remain convinced that we do have adequate understanding that the residents in total are in favor of this program. I mean, the survey that was sent out did contain all the detail, or darn close to it, that we're looking at right now, and a 35% response rate is a very substantial response rate to a randomized survey like that. I mean, that's, we did look at the results of the survey. We looked at it, we looked at those survey results block by block, in fact. There might have been a few blocks, individual blocks, that in total were against the residential permitted parking, but they were scattered in just a few of them, and otherwise, the people that did vote, you know, block by block, pretty consistently, very consistently, in fact, were in favor of the residential permitted parking. So, yes, it's true that we haven't heard exactly from 50.1% of the residents, but I'm satisfied we've seen enough where we can move forward, recognizing that there's still a great big unknown out there as to the Coastal Commission response on all of this before we have anything that we, for sure, we know how, that we can implement. So, I'm, I'll be, I didn't hear a second to your motion.
I haven't heard a motion yet.
Yes, I would also say that this is, these are always difficult programs to get through the Coastal Commission, and to be able to have one person go up there and say, "Well, you only have 50%," I would think that would give a lot of ammunition to those people who do not want to give permits. I think you would definitely want to go to the Coastal Commission and say, "Yes, we polled, and we have 68% of the people in that neighborhood, not 68% of 38% or something."
Well, I think right now, though, we have to deal with our own municipal code, and our municipal code says that you have to get 50-plus-one percent of residents. Now-
What I understood-
The majority of the residents. What's been represented to us is that we got 65% of 35%, which is, I don't know, 25% of residents. That's where we're at now, about 25%. And the city attorney said, "Well, you can set your own criteria." So, then our criteria then goes, instead of 50-plus-one, it's now around 25%.
May I understand your motion again, Tony? I believe you did make a motion. Can you, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did. Okay.
All right. I mean, is that, is the city attorney correct that if we want to change the formula, or we have to change the threshold, that we need to establish a different criteria?
Well, what the code provides is that, it says that the majority of residents adjacent to the proposed zone desire, agree, or request for preferential parking privileges. Now, how you make that determination is basically, it has to be established to the satisfaction of the city council that a majority of the residents are in favor of that. What you have before you, the evidence you have before you is basically a survey of the residents, and the response to that survey show a majority were in favor of it, but it is not 51% of the people that live out there, but it's up to the city council to determine whether, to your satisfaction, that represents a majority of the residents in that area.
So, if three people responded and two of them said yes, that would then constitute, it could constitute in our interpretation, a majority of residents?
I think you'd need a reasonable basis, so you need, you know, a reasonable basis to support your ultimate decision.
Three, three out of 1,100 would not provide a reasonable basis to draw that conclusion, but 350 out of 1,100, in my view at least, does. But that's up to what the council has to say. So, here, to bring this to a point, I'll move the approval of the residential permitted parking program as recommended by staff.
Is there a second for that motion? That motion dies for lack of a second. Don't have a motion to refer back to staff?
Yeah, I will move that the staff come back with a plan of how to conduct an adequate survey so that we can determine if there is a majority in that area that would like it.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a comment on that motion? Please vote.
With Councilmember Hen voting no, the motion carries 6-1. With Councilmember Hen voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Well, that was easy.
Just by way of some additional color on the point, though, I gather from the comments that the council, the members that voted for that resolution just now, it wasn't that you're by nature against the idea of residential permitted parking, you just want to establish a more solid basis for resident in favor. Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to Item Number 21. I'm going to give you kind of a rundown as to how we will work through this particular item. We're going to have a staff presentation by Mr. Alfred, and following that, we're going to have a presentation by our city's environmental consultant, and I believe it's Tracy Zinn here? Ah, hand raised, thank you. Following that, I'm going to give the council an opportunity to ask if they have any questions of staff at that point in time, and then I will open the public hearing. At the beginning of the public hearing, I'm going to ask the appellant, the Linda Isle HOA representative, and is that Michelle? All right. To make the presentation on behalf of the HOA, I will allocate up to but not exceeding 10 minutes for that presentation. And then, following that, we will have public comments. Once we have had public comments, I will give the appellant, as is our custom, three minutes to respond if they care to. You do not have to take the three minutes. And then I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council for final questions and decisions. So with that, staff report, Mr. Alfred.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and members of the City Council. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of an environmental document, a mitigated declaration for the Balboa Marina West project. This is the general location, basically southeast of the Coast Highway Bridge. To orient you, you see the project site outlined in red. To the south is Linda Isle. To the northwest and across the channel is Lower Castaways. The Back Bay Landing project site is to the north, Bayside Village to the northeast, and the commercial area has the Chevron, Pacific Bayside Plaza, and the Newport Auto Center to the east. This provides another view of the project site. Again, here's Linda Isle and the Back Bay Landing site, and Planet Area Two of the Back Bay Landing site, which is mentioned in the appeal and the staff report. Now, this project is a little unusual in the sense that you are asked to review an environmental document that is being presented without the actual project. Typically, you would review the environmental document at the same time you're reviewing the actual project, mainly because the waterside project was more further advanced than the landside. We decided to go ahead and proceed with the environmental documentation on this. And I want to say at the outset that whether or not this document is approved will have no bearing on ultimately whether the landside part of the project is actually approved. So it's just basically the environmental clearance for that project. But overview, the project involves expansion of the Balboa Marina, adding 24 new private slips. There is also a public dock component, which would involve four relocated slips from the existing public slips closer to 333 Building, and eight new public slips. The marine commercial building, as we indicated, is a little less further along in development, so we have a fairly conceptual design with certain assumptions. One is up to a maximum of 19,400 square feet of floor area, tuck-under parking, potential restaurant, yacht brokerage office, and public restrooms. And then finally, we have a reconfigured parking lot and new landscaping. This shows the development areas. The area in yellow is Development Area A, which is the public dock area. Area B in kind of a light green, that is the expansion of the existing marina. And then, Area C in red, which is the landside development, showing the restaurant and the parking lot areas. This is a detail of the waterside plan. You see, again, the public dock appearing somewhat of purplish color on the screen there, or on my screen, a little bit more of a velvet color. And the expansion shown is either a kind of an orange or light yellow. And here's a detail of the landside concept plan. You can see the restaurant indicated there, as well as the redesigned parking areas and access aisles. And this is a visual simulation of the marine commercial building that was used as part of the environmental analysis, mainly to deal with the height and bulk and potential impacts to the aesthetics of the area. Now, as indicated, this is just one step in the process. If the MND is upheld and approved, then the next step is to proceed with approvals for both the waterside and the landside. The waterside would be done through an approval and concept by the Harbor Resources Director, and the landside would require the filing of an application for a site development review, a conditional use permit for the restaurant, and potentially an operator's license if alcohol is done in association with that. This basically shows the process. We have the MND, which was approved by the Planning Commission. If it is upheld by the council, it would be used for environmental clearance for both the landside applications when they're filed, and the waterside approval and concept by the Harbor Resources Director. If both components are approved, then the entire project would be submitted to the Coastal Commission for a coastal development permit.
So what are you asking us to approve this evening?
We're asking you to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the mitigated negative declaration.
And that's it?
That's it. And that's a good segue into what I want to discuss next, is basically what we're dealing with, SEQA versus project review. Under the California Environmental Quality Act, the purposes of this environmental document is to identify significant and potentially significant environmental impacts, and then offer ways to either avoid or mitigate those impacts. And we believe this document does that. Project review, which has not yet commenced, will be a little bit different approach, a more detailed approach, dealing with the suitability and appropriateness of the proposed land uses and development. And some of the things that the decision-makers will use in making that decision will be consistency with the city's general plan, consistency with the city's local coastal program, which in fact would then, of course, deal with components of the coastal act, consistency with the zoning of the property, and then finally, the required findings that are necessary for a site development review, and those required for a conditional use Just as an example, dealing with the general plan, LCP, and zoning consistency, we would be looking at the purpose and intent of the marine commercial designation of the property. The city has a limited amount of land in this designation. It's our primary land use and zoning designation for coastal-dependent uses and visitor-serving uses. And while the restaurant is a visitor-serving use and allowed into that zone with a use permit, it may not be the appropriate use for that. So that's something that'll have to be considered at the project review phase. Also, there are numerous general plan policies and coastal land use plan policies and zoning regulations, dealing with compatibility of development and the interfaces with adjacent areas, siting and the design of the building, the scale, mass, character, and architecture, certainly how to address noise, lighting, and odor impacts, and of course, traffic and parking.
None of that is being considered tonight?
No, this is down the road. And then finally, dealing with the required findings I mentioned earlier for a site development review and a conditional use permit, some of the key findings of those require harmony with adjacent developments, compatibility with uses in the vicinity, aesthetic compatibility, protection of significant views, and above all, the protection of the health, safety, and general welfare of people residing and working in the area. Now, the appeal basically presents seven issues. One is that the mitigated declaration violates SEQA by failing to analyze the cumulative impacts of the approved Back Bay Landing project. Two, that the MND's analysis of temporary and permanent noise and vibration impacts was inadequate. Three, that additional information analysis of the project's water and wastewater demands were requested. Additional information analysis of the project's aesthetics impacts, particularly those related to light and glare and building height, more information was requested there. That the MND should be revised to provide additional information and clarify the project's grading impacts. And that the MND basically is piecemeal because it failed to address the range of uses that could occur on site other than a restaurant. And for these reasons, that the mitigated declaration needs to be revised and recirculated. Now, unless there are any questions regarding the project or the process, I'd like to turn this over to Tracy Zinn, the city's environmental consultant, who will address the points raised in the appeal letter.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Tracy Zinn with the consulting firm TMB Planning, and we're the professional firm retained by the city to prepare the MND. In this case, the MND was very thorough. It was approximately 186 pages, with supported by 14 technical studies. It did conclude that the project would result in significant or potentially significant impact to six subject areas, and it applies mitigation for those impacts to reduce the level of the impact to less than significant in all cases. Impacts were identified for the subject areas of aesthetics, biological resources, hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, and noise. The MND was circulated as required by SEQA for a period of 30 days, from approximately mid-August to mid-September. The city received 11 comment letters, including one comment letter from the law firm that's representing the homeowners' association this evening. Although the city was not required to respond in writing to comments received on the MND, it did so nonetheless. We prepared a thorough written response to all substantive comments received during that response period, and they are included in the public record, and they were considered by the Planning Commission in association with their deliberations on the project. Also included was an errata of minor, non-substantive changes and additions to the MND that resulted from that public review process. None of those changes were substantive enough to warrant a recirculation of the MND, and the Planning Commission agreed with that in their approval. The day of the Planning Commission hearing, we received a late comment letter from the firm representing the homeowners' association. Those comments were duplicative of the comments that they had included in their original letter and that were responded to in writing. Nonetheless, we did verbally address all of those comments again at the podium during the Planning Commission meeting. And the appeal before you this evening again repeats those points. So the, these comments have already responded, been responded to twice, once in writing, once verbally at the Planning Commission hearing, and we're addressing them again this evening. In the appeal letter, they did word some of the comments a little bit differently, but the substance is basically the same. Our firm conducted an analysis of all of the points in the appeal that Mr. Alfred enumerated, and are included in your packet and as part of the record as well. My intent was to address the three that we believe are the most substantive, or that there's probably the most concern about, which are noise, aesthetics, and recirculation of the document. If you would like me to address any of the other points, I can do so as well.
Just a clarification. One point had been brought up about Back Bay Landing.
Yes.
And my understanding is that was analyzed, but it wasn't listed? Is that in the initial?
That's correct.
But it was analyzed, all that?
The Back Bay Landing project was analyzed. It was inadvertently admitted from the list in the MND document, but it was listed in the traffic report, and it was added in that errata table that was presented to the Planning Commission.
Okay, just wanted to be sure we're clear on that. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to address those three points. The first is regarding noise. The appeal application suggests that temporary and permanent noise and vibration impacts were not adequately analyzed for several different reasons. The first is that an existing noise measurement was not taken on Linda Isle. That is true, an existing noise measurement was not taken. Because of private property issues, the noise consultant was not able to gain access to a location on Linda Isle to take the noise measurement. However, a noise measurement was taken on the project site at the seawall, which is just 260 feet away. So it's very close, and appropriately represents the noise condition that would expect to be experienced on Linda Isle, and that reading was 60.1 decibels. If a noise reading had been taken on Linda Isle, it would not have changed the conclusions of the MND or of the noise study, because we used the most conservative approach possible in analyzing impacts to that community, and that was that that community experiences a nighttime noise level of 50, so even lower than was read on the project site. Had a noise reading been taken and was actually higher, and it's likely it would have been higher, then the criteria would have been less. So we used the most stringent criteria available, which is based on only a 50-decibel reading. The second point was that they believe that the MND deferred...
Can I, I'm sorry, I'd like to come back to the noise issue.
Yes.
The, if you don't have a specific project, can you tell me how you created an envelope for the with project to say that the noise assessment, you did, all we're judging here is whether or not the disclosure of impacts is satisfactory, not the merits of a project. Just, did you disclose the impacts properly? The next phase will be, is the project that comes in within the envelope of those impact thresholds and the mitigation? What did you establish as a project, and can any subsequent application come in live within that envelope?
The project that was established was as was described in the staff report, so a building construction of approximately nine, or a maximum of 19,400 square feet, the reconfiguration of the parking lot, and a set of assumptions for the construction that is reasonable for a project of that size.
And Patrick, anything that would come in, you would weigh against that, and it would either be similar to or less than?
Yes, it would have to be within those parameters. If not, then we would have to do an additional analysis and determine what the...
Good, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you.
The second point on noise was their comment that the MND deferred mitigation. This has to do with the MND's discussion of an outdoor patio that is a possibility on that building. The MND did not defer the analysis of it. It assumed that, or disclosed that an outdoor patio is a potential at that location, and it was analyzed and an impact was identified. Yes, there is a possibility that there could be a patio and that there could be noise. But a mitigation measure is established for a subsequent acoustical study at the time the detail comes forward that would be required, and the performance measure is set that that noise study has to show that that, the operation of that building must meet municipal code requirements. So with that performance measure, we've properly concluded that that mitigation measure would reduce that impact to less than significant. I'll stop at each point and ask if there's a question. Any questions on that point? No? Okay. All right. The second point on noise was that the, that the MND did not consider noise of the parking lot. That was not true. The acoustical analysis ran a model called Sound Plan, and it included a 3-decibel correction to account for noise from patrons in the parking lot. The noise can, the noise report is attached to the MND as a technical appendix, and the modeling results are presented there. The next point was that the grading characteristics of the parking lot might affect the noise modeling. The noise analysis did include an analysis of the grade changes in the parking lot. If you look at the grading plan, parts of the parking lot closest to Linda Isle would be lowered, but there's a center portion of the parking lot that would be raised in elevation. There's approximately 29 parking spaces that would go there under the proposed plan, and the noise study did analyze that and made its conclusions appropriately. Last, the appeal suggests... Last, the appeal suggests that the MND did not adequately study noise and vibration levels during the construction process. We looked at the construction and, and all of the steps in the construction process, including pile driving that would occur in the water. This marina was reconfigured in 2009 approximately, and a very detailed monitoring report was produced, and onsite measurements were made at Linda Isle. This project, in its conceptual form, would be much less in construction characteristics, yet we assume that the level of noise and vibration would be the same as it was for that much, much larger project in 2009. So, the, the data was, was real data, not theoretical data produced by a model. So, the information that we relied on in preparing the analysis was absolutely appropriate. I was going to move on to aesthetics, if there's no questions on noise. Okay. This second main point was regarding the request for additional information on analysis of the project's aesthetic impact particularly related to light, glare, and building height. Again, we're only dealing with an approval in concept. So, the MND analyzed a box of a building with the maximum height and the maximum bulk and scale that that built, that that building may potentially contain when it comes before you, and we just, we studied that envelope. The MND contains an extensive evaluation of potential aesthetic impacts, including light, glare, scenic view obstruction. Six visual simulations were prepared. One of them was in the presentation, and they were all analyzed for their potential to substantially block public reviews or result in substantial degradation of the existing visual character quality of the site.
How did you handle, what if that bulk was an all-glass building?
The MND recognizes that the details of the building's architecture are not available for study. So, the conclusion was that, yes, there is a potential, depending on the characteristics of the building, that it might not meet the policies of the general plan or the local coastal plan, or may not be compatible.
Next part of the process that would control that element?
Correct.
That would prevent that from happening.
That's correct. There's a mitigation measure specified that indicates that the city must conduct that detailed review to ensure that it meets city policies. If it does not, then this MND would not be appropriate for use at that time. But at this time, yes, it is appropriate to use for the approval in concept, which is the only item that's before the city.
So, as far as the bulk goes, what if the city didn't have a policy regarding bulk, but it clearly was bulky? How would that be handled?
The, the MND studied an envelope, which is the maximum building height permitted by code and a maximum building square footage of 19,400. So, if by some chance a building came forward that was larger than that, the city would need to evaluate the analysis in this MND and determine if it is appropriate. If not, then subsequent environmental review would be required at that subsequent stage.
Hard to build a building uglier than a building that just stretched to the entire envelope with no articulation.
The last point I wanted to address was the suggestion that the MND should be recirculated. The CEQA guidelines clearly describe the conditions under which an MND that was circulated for public review needs to be recirculated, and there's no circumstance in this case that meets any of those warrants. There are no new unavoidable significant effects that haven't already been publicly disclosed, and all of the mitigation measures are appropriate, and there's no revision to the project proposed that would reduce potential impacts to less than significant beyond that that's already been disclosed in the MND that was circulated for public review and considered by the planning commission and approved by the planning commission.
All right. Any further questions of environmental consultant? Any further questions of council, the staff?
I just have one of Mr. Harp. Are you satisfied that the, the response by the environmental consultant to the, the issues raised by the appellant are adequate for CEQA?
Yeah, we did a thorough review of all the comments that were made, as well as looking at the responses, and we believe that we've complied with the California Environmental Quality Act in all its aspects, and that it's been fully analyzed, and it would be ready for you to be approved this evening. Of course, we'll wait to hear what they have to say, but that's our analysis.
Okay. And then after the public hearing is concluded, could you advise us if you've heard anything that would change your mind?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Last chance at this point. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing. At this point in time, I would ask the appellant's representative to come forth, identify yourself, please, and we'd love to hear your comments at this point.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hill, Mayor Protoim Selich, and members of the council. My name is Paige Ghosni. I'm an attorney at Jackson de Marco Titus Peck and Pond, representing the appellant, the Linda Isle Homeowners Association. You can see from the photo that was initially put up in staff's presentation, the proximity of Linda Isle to this proposed quote-unquote "project." There are several deficiencies with the MND. There's information that's not defined, not analyzed, impacts that aren't factored in. All of these issues have been thoroughly briefed, and I trust that members of the council have, have read the comment letters that have been submitted, the supplemental materials that have been submitted, as well as staff's response. My presentation tonight is, is not intended to rehash arguments and issues that have already been thoroughly briefed. Quite frankly, the, the reason that we're here tonight, Ms. Zinn said, you know, the council is, or excuse me, the commission has addressed these issues, and we're here addressing them again. The reason that we are is because the city's responses are not adequate, and they haven't addressed the issues that have been raised in our letter, and they haven't addressed most fundamentally the problem that Mr. Alfred raised right off the bat, which is that you're faced here with a, a unique environmental document. You're being asked to approve an environmental document without an actual project. Project is a term of art under CEQA. What CEQA requires is that a specific project's potential environmental impacts be fully disclosed, be analyzed, and that mitigation be proposed to mitigate those potential impacts. With what's before the council today, with what you're being asked to approve or to affirm the planning commission's approval of, there's nothing, there is no project. I want to hit on some of the, the key topics that Ms. Zinn raised and that are key to our, our presentation here tonight. The first is as to cumulative, cumulative impacts, and whether or not the project adequately considered. The cumulative impacts of the Back Bay Landing project, particularly Planning Area 2. In fact, the mitigated negative declaration did not consider, did not consider Planning Area 2 as part of its impacts, or as part of its cumulative impacts analysis, and this is most obvious with respect to the aesthetics analysis. Appendix L to the MND includes several visual simulations. None of those visual simulations show there being any development on Planning Area 2. However, Planning Area 2 of Back Bay Landing includes a proposed 9,000-square-foot commercial marine office building. The commission and the council now cannot evaluate the aesthetic impacts of that building on the environment surrounding it, including to Linda Isle, without the visual simulations actually showing that document, or actually showing that structure. Now, what the city has done instead of that is to look back and do a, a post hoc review of, of the environmental impacts, the cumulative impacts of Planning Area 2, and to do it in the response to comments and a staff report. And that's, that's not what CEQA requires. What CEQA requires is that these issues be disclosed upfront, be analyzed upfront in the actual environmental document that's being approved, and that wasn't done here. What was done was these, these impacts were addressed and discussed in a staff report and in a technical memo that was done post hoc in response to a, a CEQA challenge posed by, posed by the, the residents of the city that will be most directly impacted by the project. And, and that's not what CEQA allows, that's not what CEQA requires. The second issue that I wanted to address was piecemealing and the deferred mitigation issue. The very essence of piecemealing is that a project is segmented and approved in stages, and that's exactly what you're being asked to do here. You're being asked to approve, an approval in concept of what may or may not ultimately be built on this site, and then down the road, you're going to be asked to evaluate the specific project details of that. The council, the commission, and now the council cannot conclude, cannot determine that there will be no significant environmental impacts, or that any impacts that there will be can be mitigated without knowing what that project is and what those impacts will be, what those project design features will be that will give rise to these impacts. Now, the city states that there's no piecemealing violation because they evaluated the most intensive envelope, a restaurant use being the most intense use, and that anything that would be, any impacts that would be built within that envelope would be less than significant, would be none greater than what would be included with a restaurant, and that's not, that's not what CEQA requires, that's not what CEQA allows. The second point, delaying the mitigation analysis until down the road, until site plans are submitted and permit applications are submitted, most specifically as to the noise analysis in that, that's essentially, that's deferred mitigation, and that's not allowed under CEQA. And the reason is, is that you have to evaluate these impacts upfront, and you have to determine to what extent they will be significant and can be mitigated. Now, the, one of the primary cases that we cited in our letter and that was discussed in the city's response is the Endangered Habitats League case, which actually involved the exact same mitigation measure, almost to a, almost to a T is what we've got here, which is an acoustical study being performed at the permit application stage that would show only that the, the proposed project would comply with the city's, excuse me, with the county's noise ordinance. Court of Appeal struck that down and said, this is inadequate. There are no clear standards there, just as there are no clear standards here. You cannot say that the only requirements that a project need be met, that need met, need be met are, are compliance with the city's noise ordinance, because that's something that it would be required to do anyway. As to the data that was relied upon by the city for noise analysis, there were two components of it. Data that was compiled in 2008, 2009 by a different component, excuse me, by a different consultant, and that related to a different project, and more recent data that was compiled this summer in different locations. Now, there was no data, no actual noise testing done at Linda Isle, the residents, the, that will be most directly impacted by noise from the proposed project. Now, the statement was made that no noise measurements were taken because of private property issues. They couldn't gain access to the property. Well, that's not exactly true, because they never asked. Had they asked, had they, had they intended to establish a baseline of what the actual noise impacts are prior to conducting their, the city's environmental analysis, then that's something that certainly could have been explored, and the residents of Linda Isle certainly would have been open to allowing them to come in and take those measurements, subject, of course, to right-of-entry permits and protection for, you know, their own interests in case things happen on their property. So, that was never actually taken. Now, the city's analysis regarding potential construction vibration impacts concludes that because there will be fewer pilings installed than there were in 2008, 2009, and because they will be installed further away than the original dock construction in 2008, 2009, that there will be no impacts. What the city fails to address is the fact that in 2008, 2009, there was actual mitigation measures in place to ensure that that wouldn't happen. Now, the proposed construction vibration impacts of this project, none of those same mitigation measures are being proposed. None of those same mitigation measures are in place. You're not going to have the same result if you don't have the same protections and mitigation in place. The issue of wastewater and the assumptions used by the city is, is significant in that what the city is relying on are general zoning assumptions of commercial uses. If indeed, the proposed use that's going to be there is a restaurant, that certainly is going to have a more intensive water use than any, than another use as an office or something like that. The city didn't adequately analyze what those rates would be, what those impacts would be, because it didn't research actual water rate standards. It asked IRWD, which is going to be serving the project, do you have a restaurant factor that we could use? IRWD said no, and they said, okay, well, that's good enough, and that's not good enough for purposes of compliance with CEQA.
Why is IRWD servicing a project in Bayside?
That's a good question. I would pose that to city staff.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Is George here? He was here earlier. No, I saw, I saw that too, and I couldn't, I couldn't understand why it was IRWD. I mean, that's way outside its normal lines for the city.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either.
I, I thought perhaps they used IRWD standards, which might be the same, and that might just be industry standards or something, but yeah, that was, that was peculiar.
They did use the IRWD standards, but as I recall from the staff analysis of response to the comments, it was, there was, statement was made that it was be because IRWD would be servicing the project. Now, whether or not that statement is correct, I can't say, but that's the statement that was made in, in the materials provided by staff. But in any event, the key issue with water, the key issue with water compliance, or excuse me, with the analysis of the water demands of the project, highlights one of the real significant impacts to Linda Isle, which is light and glare from the parking lot. Staffs admitted that a, a large portion of the parking lot will be raised approximately eight or nine feet, and as a result, there will be 29 new parking spaces shining their headlights directly across the channel into Linda Isle. Now, the only mitigation for those impacts are supposed dense vegetation that's going to be planted on parking lot islands. Well, now, the, the water use factors and the water demand analysis as provided by the city doesn't include high-fold, dense foliage-type plants, it's for low-water-use plants. So, there's an inconsistency there, either the, there's going to be dense foliage and the water use demands need to be raised or, or not, and, and there's going to be these impacts to Linda Isle and to other residents. I want to just conclude by saying that the, there are a number of other issues that are raised in our letter, and I would hope that the city would consider those and enact accordingly. The city council has the opportunity to correct all of the defects that we've raised, to prepare an environmental analysis that not only complies with the spirit and the letter and intent of CEQA, but that also addresses impacts to a significant portion of the community, residents of Linda Isle, many of whom are sitting here today, and some of whom may speak to the council tonight about their own positions and concerns. I would ask that the city council consider these comments, consider our objections, consider our appeal, and do not affirm the planning commission's approval of the mitigated negative declaration. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you.
It does say, I mean, right in, in response to, she added that the water demand factors that were used were from Irvine Water District, Irvine Water District, and the city is obligated to use the demand factors provided by the water purveyor.
Just clarification, we're using the standards, but the document does say that the city would provide the service.
Which documents? Because the planning commissioners don't say that.
No, the, the actual.
The MND?
Yes.
Okay.
And just briefly to address one of the main points that was raised, it is appropriate for the approval of a mitigated negative deck before the project approval. It is a little bit different here that you are looking at MND without looking at the project, but that's perfectly fine. And in fact, in this case, it's necessary to do so because you have two elements that are going before two different bodies. You have one piece of the puzzle that's going to Harbor Commission, you have another for recommendation, and then you have a second piece of the puzzle that's going to Planning Commission. And you would have piecemealing to the extent you didn't analyze the whole project, but you analyze the whole mitigated negative deck and approve it before it gets to those bodies so you can avoid piecemealing. As far as the technical issues, I'll let staff address those along with Ms. Mulvihill from our office, but I thought that was an important point to clarify.
All right. I would like to continue with the public hearing, though, before we get into that.
Well, we, would you, because I just had some questions that, that I'd like clarified, and maybe they would want to be addressed later, so, or by the public, I don't know.
All right.
Just the Area 2, you talked about the simulation, that it wasn't, the Area 2 of Back Bay Landing, and that the simulation was not correct or something, and that somehow threw things off?
One thing I would like to make clear, and it's in, in the report, is that Back Bay Landing was also a. was also a conceptual plan.
Right.
And anticipated additional site development review down the road. And they analyzed, that EIR analyzed their project and the development on this project site with the much larger building, and it concluded there was no significant impact. So we think that the, that bolsters the analysis and conclusions of the MND that even with the Back Bay Landing project included, you're not going to have a significant visual impact.
And then the second point was discussion that the previous project, there was mitigation for the pilings. This one, there is no mitigation required for the pilings, and is that simply because of the distance, or there are other factors that are in there that there was no mitigation required?
I'll ask Tracy to address that.
My understanding is that the time the original replacement project was done, a noise analysis was conducted, and through that process, it concluded that there could potentially be some noise impacts at Linda Isle or vibration impacts. So part of the mitigation was implementation of the monitoring. So when the monitoring was actually done and the noise and vibration were measured, that showed that impacts were in fact not significant in the real world condition, and we're relying on that data as what is likely to occur from this project.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic? If there is, would you please come to the front row and line up in the chairs?
Hi, my name's Jim Jordan. I live at 85 Linda Isle. Just a couple of points. One is the noise impact that happened on the project in 2009 was from pilings being put into sand. That's a pretty mild process, pretty understandable. This project is going to end up affecting an end of the area under the project. If you remember where the Ruben Ely used to be, there's a slab of stone that's going to have to be jackhammered out, dynamited out, or in some way removed. And I don't mean just a, a little piece of stone. The whole area that the Ruben Ely was resting on, if you look at that area underwater, is stone. They won't be able to put slips in that area without removing that stone. So that's point number one. Removing stones is a lot different than using water drilling on a piling. I'm not an engineer, but it's just my thought. The other thing is on the Back Bay Landing, when we first were told about that project, we had an opportunity to look at the entire project. We weren't concerned about the, just the environmental report or that part, but how was it going to affect the people on Linda Isle, looking out of Linda Isle, back across Pacific Coast Highway? And even though part of the project was going to be on the other side of PCH, there was one building in the project that was 10 and 1/2 or 12 feet higher than allowed, and due to our discussions with the developer on that, that building height was pulled down to a level that would be within the city's parameters. The current project has, the conceptual drawings that we've seen, that Irvine Company came around and presented to us, shows a very large building with a roof that extends well above Pacific Coast Highway. I'd invite you to come to any one of our homes on Linda Isle and look back out across the highway at the current development that's there, and tell us what you think if you look at their plan for this monstrosity they're thinking of putting in. And lastly, even though when the folks from the developer came out and talked with us and made a presentation to a few of the neighbors, they showed us some slides that had a building, and we asked them repeatedly, "What's going to be in that building?" "Oh, we don't know." We asked, "Could there be a restaurant there?" "Oh, probably not." Now, when it's going through the approval process, we're hearing about a restaurant with outdoor dining and entertainment. So we're concerned about the noise.
I'd like to ask staff a question based upon that, those comments. Those concerns, would not those concerns be dealt with in the next step of the process?
Well, I think it's important to note that, it's interesting how CEQA works. It still gives an opportunity for people to come up, up to project approval. So when the project comes forward for approval, it would be, you could still make those same comments, and you comment on the project as it comes forward. I believe it would be addressed. I'll let Kim Brant, the director, deal with the specific issues.
If I may, we analyzed the project at the height limit shown in the MND because we wanted to look at potential impact under that maximum development scenario. So you would have an adequate understanding of those impacts, but the appropriateness of exceeding the base height limit is something that has to be decided through the site development review process. It's not a done deal, and it's something that has to be requested, it's going to have to be analyzed, and necessary findings will have to be made.
And if I could just reiterate.
So the short answer to my question was?
It will be handled at a later phase, and if we need to do additional environmental analysis as part of that project review, it will be done at that time.
One quick comment on the noise? Thank you. Next. Got to be fair, sorry. Love to talk to you all night.
By the way, the building that Jim Jordan was talking about was a 35-foot building that the Back Bay Landing was set at, and it was reduced to 26. But when we're talking about the Irvine project, everything is conceptual, everything's done at a maximum height. Why this, that the other project had reasonable? I hope you all noticed in those pictures just how.
Did we have your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Margot O'Connor, and I live across from the project.
Thank you.
And I hope you noticed how narrow that channel is. We're the narrowest channel in this beautiful harbor. Nowhere else do you have such a narrow channel, and the commercial right up against the residential. There was talk about the cumulative effect of the Back Bay and the Irvine project. I'd like to remind you, I couldn't help thinking, we still haven't felt the pain from Mariner's Point. That Dover Bridge is, it's, there's a stranglehold on it. You have Mariner's Point at the west end, a multi, a large Back Bay Landing project away from Linda Isle, but immediately north of the bridge, and now the expanded Irvine project. That Dover Bridge is a dilemma that we've had for years. No one's been able to solve it. It's the only connection. Traffic increases every year that I've been here. It's going to keep increasing, yet we keep approving projects and are just strangling that. We hear talk about approval and concept. There's nothing conceptual to those of us living on Linda Isle. We're living with the reality of noise and light pollution every day right now. We have decades of experience as to how poorly Irvine Company controls its tenants. I'm sure you'll hear from other residents regarding that. I'd like to remind you, those of you that remember Windows on the World, I think it was called?
Bay.
Windows on the Bay, thank you. When that closed, there were two young entrepreneurs that wanted to propose a restaurant there again. Across the huge main channel, we had Lido Island. Some residents complained about possible noise and light pollution. The existing council put an end to that project. They were so concerned about the rights of residents to enjoy their personal property. Here we have a project that's extensive, narrowest channel in this harbor. I don't think it's wider than this room. My grandson could throw a football from one end, from the end of one dock to our dock. Yet I'm going to be looking at a 40-foot, huge 19,500 square foot building, which is conceptual, no more view, and dealing with the noise of a restaurant, with the residents coming and going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I still get the compression, the compression, I still get the impression that we're confusing what we're doing tonight and what the next phase is going to be. Help me with this.
If I, if I may, I did advise the planning commission, and it was an issue that was raised at that time, too. And what's important to remember is that the California Environmental Quality Act says that you are to conduct environmental review at the earliest possible stage. And in this instance, staff agreed that the earliest possible stage is when this conceptual plan is in motion for the land side, and yet you have waterside development that is past conceptual. But there are two different decision-making entities for the, ones for the water, that'd be through the Harbor Resources Manager, the recommendation from the Harbor Commission, and then you have the land side through the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission will probably take longer than the Harbor Commission, and this seemed to be the earliest possible time in which to analyze the impacts of the entire project. And I, I did want to reinforce that staff has spent a great amount of time to try to explain the subsequent approval projects, and at those subsequent approval times, the city is obligated to reanalyze the environmental documentation. Is it still valid? Is it still adequate? And that's what we're doing here today. We are just simply looking at the mitigated negative declaration. Does it describe what we know today adequately? Does it inform the public of what we think the potential impacts are? And does it mitigate those that are potentially significant? And that's what's before you tonight, and it is not the last discussion at all on the land side development projects. But staff did analyze the sort of largest envelope possible as opposed to maybe a much smaller one, because it did not seem realistic.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, what I've heard from the last two speakers, I would share every one of those concerns. I mean, I would not want the glare disrupting my view out the window. I would not want a 35-foot-high building 40 feet away from me, all of those types of things. And, and I think that in fact, the project, when it becomes a specific project, will have to go through every one of those analytical points. And, and what this is, is taking the worst condition in every one of those and putting it all together as part of an environmental test, not the actual approval of what would ever eventually be built there, and the sound that that specific project would generate, the height, the aesthetic, the glare, all of those types of things would be dealt with at that point in time. And so that, to me, two different topics.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney? First, thanks for all your great help on the Big Canyon agreement. That took a lot of time. With this process that's before us, when does the public comment period close on, on comments related to CEQA? I mean, do they have until the last day? How does that work?
Yeah, so under, under the Public Resources Code, all the way up through project approval, they can still submit evidence related to the mitigated negative deck and whether it's adequate or inadequate. So it goes all the way through project approval.
Okay, so they're not, by accepting the planning commission's recommendation or their decision, upholding their decision, that doesn't preempt them from continuing to comment?
Right. That's absolutely correct.
As details of the, of the project unfold?
My name is Donald McCullough. I live at, my wife and I live at 105 Linda Isle. If you plot that on a map, that's right opposite 333, so I can talk to you about noise in restaurants in the present tense. My wife and I have lived there for 25 years. The first, do the math right, 16, 17 years, there was a nice restaurant over there called Yankee Tavern, and not once, to my knowledge, was there ever an issue relative to sound from that restaurant. About nine years ago, enter 333, a different type of establishment, different operational issues, and along with that came a request for a outdoor dining deck. We have been involved with that issue since 2005, sound and noise on a regular basis, and we're, we're still involved with that today. In fact, I see your staff over here, including the city manager, has been kind enough to, to meet with us, and we're hoping one day to resolve that issue. The Irvine Company wants to evidently get started early and, and wants to have these things considered early. I think, I don't know whether it is, I don't trust the process, but noise, when you're living there, is a really big issue. I would invite someone to come down to my house and sit out there about the time there are a bunch of folks in the 333 drinking shooters and cheering one another on. It's not fun. We're 200 feet face-to-face away from that establishment. So when do you start planning? It was my opinion that the CEQA stuff was to try to head off these kinds of issues and nip them in the bud early, or at least develop standards by which development could take place, and both parties, in our case, residences, could coexist peacefully alongside of restaurant uses and that type of commercial. And I think we can. In fact, right now, I think with many of your help, I think five of you on this council helped us negotiate an agreement with that operator, which I still believe in. I think the staff's got it wrong, we disagree, and we're working on that right now. We think we had an agreement. We think the sooner that you can get that in concrete and get that established as a standard, it's going to be helpful to the future user, operator, and we'll all understand how the game works. We got it into it kind of after the fact. The dining deck was evidently approved prior to our arrival, not executed or not, not pursued by the previous owner. 333 came along and decided to execute it, and it's taken nine years to get to where we're at today. So I think you want to be real careful when you consider this noise issue, because it's horrible to live with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill O'Connor. I live at 90 Linda Isle. I think that there's been absolutely no community outreach on this. I think that the Irvine Company, when they built the Marina, made an adequate presentation along with diagrams that, that were available and left in our clubhouse for people, the public to examine. And none of that occurred with this huge development. It's impossible to not overlook the fact that there will be noise and light pollution from what they propose. I don't know, we have an appeal in. I don't know what exactly the council is being asked to do tonight, except kick the can down the road. There will be major issues with this. Why not start tonight and not go ahead and look at more mitigation, because there will be problems? And I don't know why we're taking this interim step to just push those problems off for a little while. There's been significant problems with the existing restaurants. We had, I've appeared before this council, not this, not these people, but this council 10 or 12 years ago about the issues with the Ruben Ely, and the council successfully helped us negotiate some issues that required them to move the bands inside and to, for outdoor dining, that little bit that they had, to put covers over it, which we then lived with very successfully for several years. The planning commission refused us. We had to go to the council with our case, and we did get relief from them. We had to go to the council with our case, and we did get relief from them. That was about 12 years ago. This is a recipe, to move ahead tonight with anything is a recipe for problems down the road. It would be very good if the council would stop now and thoughtfully have Mr. Alvoard go over what the reality is. We're not dealing with reality yet. This concept, if it moves forward, is just going to be the issues that we have in a few months. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jack Schwartz, 89 Lynde Isle. We lived through the Rubini Lee for a lot of years with a lot of noise and problems and headlights, and that's why we want to make the Planning Commission, you know, aware of what's going to happen later on with the, you know, in the daytime, it's no problem, of course, but in the nighttime, at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, the cars starting, there's going to be boats starting out there leaving the restaurants. And that particular area right now is mainly, young people are going to go to these restaurants. The Soul and the 333 are mainly in the later hours inhabited by younger people that are more noise-making. So I think we need to look at this for the future, even though they're going to, this may not be the topic tonight, but I was told if we don't come and voice our opinion now that we couldn't later on come down and say something that wasn't brought up tonight. So that's why I'm here. Also, they're talking about the impact of the pylons. I have cracks in my patio right now from when they did it the last time. So it did impact us, but it's really the future. We don't really know what this restaurant's going to be, just hazy stuff right now. Is it going to be outdoor patio dining and stuff like that? And that's probably one of the main issues, because we're so close. And so just, if you would take consideration about future planning on this thing, right now, we don't know much about it, and so before there's any decisions made about that restaurant, it really needs to be looked at, the position of it and how the opening's going to be toward our island. I live right on the tip, and I would probably be impacted by most of it, as I was before. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment on this particular item? If not, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back and ask staff if they would have any further comments first before I bring it back.
Just briefly, it'd probably be good to hear from the appellant again if he has the additional comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Tried to get through a meeting without screwing up, and I haven't done it yet, so...
I understand. One quick comment, this was in response to a question by Councilmember Daigle about the, losing the right to comment. The public comment period for any subsequent permits and approvals, site development permits, CUPs and things, Lynde Isle residents and the entire public's going to have the right to comment on those as they come before Planning Commission, et cetera, in the future. But those approvals, those applications, those aren't SEQA. It's possible staff might determine that additional SEQA review will be necessary, and in that case, the comments that would be submitted would be as to environmental adequacy, as to SEQA. The document that you're approving tonight is the foundational SEQA document for all of the development that will be approved or that will be submitted and applied for, for this particular project. This is the baseline document. So the right to comment on this foundational environmental document, if the council approves or upholds the Planning Commission's approval of the MND, that right will end tonight, so...
Okay, so as the project unfolds and you see a component of that project that you think requires additional SEQA review, then you can express that to the council?
That's correct. We can express that in comments to staff, to commission, et cetera.
Okay, and potentially litigate it if you feel it's inadequate.
Well, that's correct. But what we could litigate would be as to the permit approval itself, not as to the SEQA document itself. That right ends tonight.
To this SEQA document?
This SEQA document, and this is going to be the foundational document for all of that development. With that, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Now close the public hearing. Just back to staff.
Ms. Mulvihill, I'm going to ask her to respond to some specific comments that were raised.
Thank you. Unless there are specific questions, everything that the city has received as far as comments up until tonight has been discussed by staff as well as consulted with the co-applicant, as well as the environmental consultant. And I will tell you, I haven't heard anything new this evening. We did spend quite a bit of time in responding to both the very late comments we received before the Planning Commission, as well as to the appellant's issues that were raised in the appeal. And again, this is your consideration of whether or not you want to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the mitigated negative deck. What I did hear this evening, though, does need clarification, is as to the reference to the Irvine Ranch Water District. And unfortunately, while the mitigated negative declaration very clearly talked about how the city was providing water and talked about the city's water master, I'm sorry, water management plan and the projected use being consistent with that, the responses that the city prepared, which did rely on some analysis by the firm of StanTech, did reference IRWD. And so, sorry for the confusion, but it is the city's water management plan that this project was evaluated against and will be the city's water service serving the project. The other issue that I wanted to address was the issue of the noise study. I want to clarify that in absence of a real defined project, we are dealing in concept. And the one issue that the MND recognizes is if there is an outdoor patio at a restaurant, there might be some noise issues. And again, we're going to have to deal with that when a project proposes an outdoor patio in a restaurant. And we are familiar with the proximity of the Lynde Isle residents, and we are familiar with the issues there. Certainly, the Planning Commission is aware of those issues, too, and I think that they will be addressed at that time, when and if an outdoor patio in an outdoor restaurant is proposed. But we did acknowledge that that's a possibility, and so it wasn't something that was ignored. On the issue of a noise study, the suggestion that there has been no contact with the residents to do an onsite noise study, I do disagree with that. Although the city did not contact the residents, the co-applicant certainly did, and there even was a discussion to allow a noise study to be completed, and I believe it was at the property of one of the commoners tonight. Fortunately, the terms of that access, the allowance of a noise study consultant to be on a person's property, carried with it some conditions regarding the rights to that study, the rights to reports, the rights to the contract for that noise study. And again, although the city was not a party to those discussions, if we had been, we probably would have not agreed at all to those terms either, simply as the lead agency. So while it's unfortunate that there wasn't allowed access, it certainly wasn't for lack of trying, as far as what the city has been told and has received, as far as the correspondence between the homeowners association and the co-applicant. I think, in general, the issues raised by council, I did have a discussion with them. I think we are going to agree to disagree, both on the case analysis that was presented in the responses, as far as deferred mitigation, and as well as whether or not this document did adequately analyze the environmental impacts as required by SEQA. Our office has concluded, based on what we've seen, based on what we've known, that it does, and we have recommended approval of the MND. More importantly, we also recommend that you make findings that none of the information that was presented up until right now warrants a recirculation of this document under SEQA.
Ms. Mulvihill, let me try some 10 o'clock logic on you. SEQA is a disclosure document. I now know by virtue of this document that if, in fact, there is an outdoor patio, there will be an impact. That's what this, the purpose of this document is to tell me that, and that there are ways to offset that impact, to mitigate that impact. Both Mr. O'Connor and McCallum have said in the past, there have been restaurants in those locations that have met their satisfaction and have not created noise impacts. So now that I'm armed with that information, I can act now to say, no outdoor dining in the future, if that's the direction that we want to go. I can say, there are extraordinary mitigations to achieve our noise ordinance, because now I know that if I do nothing and there's outdoor dining, I create an impact. Absent the ability of this disclosure document to arm me with the information that with outdoor dining and nothing else, I'm going to create an impact, now when you give me a project, I have the tools to mitigate the impact. Correct? Thank you.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you. Well, I can certainly empathize with the concerns that the residents of Lynde Isle had. In fact, a couple of years ago, Dawn, with you, I worked real hard on the, trying to resolve the 333 issue with noise across the channel, so it's something that I'm certainly concerned about. But I do believe, as Councilman Petro alluded to, that this is the first step in the process that will be when the building actually comes in and we actually sit down and have a site plan review and take a look at the detailed building plan. And as far as the scale and scope of the project that's before us now, this environmental document is, in my opinion, completely adequate. I haven't heard anything brought up this evening that would change my mind. Our staff has confirmed that, in their opinion, that it's adequate. You can be assured that if I'm still on the council, when the project comes before the council, it will get a thorough review for all the concerns that you have, that you've expressed in your correspondence and in your testimony tonight. So with that, I'm going to move that we uphold the Planning Commission's approval and adopt the resolution as stated in the staff report.
I think you also have to make a finding, too, that it doesn't warrant recirculation. Is that correct?
I think that's part of the motion, isn't it?
It's included in the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Further council discussion? Do we have any further advice from legal counsel on this? That was an affirmative no. All right, then I would ask for you to vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
We will now move to item number 22, film permit fee suspension.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, this is a fairly minor item. It does require that it be a public hearing, but what it does is it at least temporarily removes any of our Film Liaison fees, because we're not doing that anymore, as Film LA will start to do that. We do have a staff report. I don't need to make that presentation if you're ready to roll with it.
I'd move the item.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further council questions of staff? I would like to open this to public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to comment on this item from the public?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I found this staff report a little difficult to understand, despite its simplicity. It's obviously a proposal for outsourcing, which I always find a little puzzling, because it's an admission that some other agency or entity can do things more efficiently and at lower cost, one assumes, than our own city staff is able to do them. We normally hear the reason for that is that there's a profit motive, which makes it even more remarkable that you can do it cheaper, even building in a profit. But in this case, it is a nonprofit, public benefit corporation that is going to be taking over this role of film permitting. And I couldn't really tell from the staff report if the consumer in this case, which is apparently the film agencies, are actually getting the service that we provide, the permitting, at a lower cost than they currently are. I understand that we're substituting their fees for our fees, but I don't know how the fees compare. On the second page, there's fees here, and it says, Film LA will charge its own fees in addition to the city fees, they're separate from them. There's a table here, it says, most of it has fees in it, but there's one down here, maximum notification charges, see a separate schedule. I couldn't find the separate schedule. So I think it would be helpful to understand if, by this outsourcing, we're actually providing the service at a lower cost. And then the other comment unrelated to those, as I had, I guess it was a year or so ago, our much-beloved Newport Beach and Company, when they were asking for their 10-year contract with the city, was telling us all about their different services that they were going to provide. And I recall there was a dine Newport Beach component, there was a film Newport Beach component, and this sounds very much like what they were proposing to do, so I don't know if we considered the two. I'm not at all recommending them as an alternative to these, but it would sound like the film Newport Beach component of Newport Beach and Company is now redundant or unnecessary. Thank you.
Any further individuals in the public like to comment on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Further comments in the council? Please vote.
Keith, was that an affirmative? Okay. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. I have number 23.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as we move to current business, this first item is a proposal for an option to lease the city parking lot at Palm Street, and this would be an option to lease awarded to Explore Ocean. And for folks at home, Explore Ocean is an ocean educational experience now located on the peninsula. And in order to facilitate some of their plans, including for, a need for additional parking, and they approached the city with a request to lease the Palm Street parking lot from us, this is merely an option to execute a lease later if the project was approved, if they pursued funding and achieved SEQA compliance. It doesn't bind the city to take an action on Explore Ocean, either affirmative or negative, doesn't bind them to, bind you as a council to adopt an environmental impact report, but it does set in place an option, should that happen, that Explore Ocean would have the right to use that lot. There would remain a number of public spaces available to the public in concert with Explore Ocean. I'd certainly welcome your questions or comments about it.
Counselor Manon?
Yeah, I just want to put a quick conceptual summary on this. It's a seven-year option. It's conditioned on the Explore Ocean having received all the permits, including city permits and approvals and coastal commission, that they have to demonstrate they have the money to do the project, and they have to have an approved EIR. You know, otherwise, if they can't meet those conditions, the city gets the property back, and the deal is terminated. It does not bind the city to approve the projects. It does give, however, Explore Ocean a clear path to solve its parking needs for its project, and it does enable moving forward with its project application that's been submitted to the city and fundraising in light of that clear path. And Dave mentioned this, but I think it's important. The city, if the project does proceed, gets approximately 300 more publicly available parking spaces at effectively no cost to the city. So the city operates the lot and keeps all the revenues until such time as the option is exercised, and I consider this, you know, it's a true win-win for the city and Balboa Village. It's a great example of a public-private partnership where everybody benefits. So with that, I'll move the item.
Second. All right. Any further council comments?
Yeah, Mayor Hill and Counselor Manon, I appreciate your characterization. You said that one of the contingencies is money to do the project. Looking at the actual option terms, it says EO, or Explore Ocean, has provided reasonable proof of financial ability to proceed with construction and completion of the EO project. I want to see them construct and complete this, but I also want to make sure that they can continue to operate it into the future without support from the city. This is a private venture, and therefore, I would like to have you consider an amendment to that that would include in the agreement under 3C, the addition of "with construction and completion and operation" for the EO project.
Yeah, if it's subject to any comments we might hear from Explore Ocean, I'm okay to amend my motion to include that.
Any further council comments? I'd like to open it up to the public. You know, if the public... I'd like to open it up to the public, you know, if the public would like to speak on this item.
By way of introduction, I'm privileged to have been a longtime resident of Newport Beach, having been in the first freshman class of Cornell High School, so I've been around a long time. I've also been legal counsel of the Fun Zone and been an owner in it for several years. As you may or may not know, the Fun Zone has operated for 66 years. We oppose the ground lease and the option lease of the parking structure as it's unfair to the Fun Zone and other Balboa merchants and other customers and perhaps other residents of the city of Newport Beach. I have nine bullet points, and I will be finished in three minutes in deference to some comments made about the late hour. First, there was no open bidding whatsoever to the lease. Thus far, the city has agreed to only one party, Explore Ocean. Second, the lease option is for a nominal sum of $2,500 for seven years and then $2,500 for an additional three years. The parking structure will be tied up for 10 years for $10,000. This is a nominal sum to tie up the property. Third, there's an additional five-year option for a total of 15 years for regulatory approval within the lease. Therefore, it's 15 years this lease may sit in option. Fourth, this lease is for 60 years. 60 years, 10 years for the option to be exercised and an additional 50 years. It's a long-term decision. Fifth, revenue is based on the current rate charged by the city. All additional revenue increases go to Explore Ocean, based on the current 68 spaces, but the entire increase of 386 spaces goes to Explore Ocean. So the city receives income for 68 spaces at the current rate, and Explore Ocean receives an income above the current 68 spaces. And all the income of the remaining 318 spaces goes to Explore Ocean. Sixth, the ground lease provides Explore Ocean may grant subleases, licenses, permits, and concessions. This may or may not benefit the other Balboa merchants and their customers. It is in the discretion of Explore Ocean. They can freeze out other competition if they so desire. How is this a public use of the property? Seventh, the ground lease permits the Explore Ocean to close this parking structure for up to 12 days, effectively getting it the right to exclusively use the area for its highest-revenue days, such as the Christmas parade. This would not be fair to the other Balboa merchants and their customers and destroying the nature of the parking structure and the Christmas parade event. Eighth, and this is addressed to Mr. Petro specifically, no provision for performance bond is discussed in the documents. What if Explore Ocean does not qualify to build this structure? The 990 federal income tax forms as filed on the Internet show that Explore Ocean, three years ago, lost $244,000. Last year, it lost $544,000. This year, it's lost $1.4 million. Thus, over the last four years, according to the public record, it's lost over $2.2 million. It may be very difficult to obtain a bond or work of improvement.
Thank you, sir.
Lastly?
Last sentence.
There's no provision for what happens if Coastal Zone Commission does not approve it or if it modifies the number of spaces. What happens? We ask that these issues be addressed by the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public like to come talk, speak on this item?
I would just note it's a man of character who wears a bowtie.
Comments out of order.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Tom Pollak. I'm the president of Explore Ocean, and Explore Ocean is a nonprofit located in the Balboa Village. We're the second-largest landowner in the village, and the project before you today is a result of about 23 months of negotiation with the city, going through the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, all the input involved. It's a, as you described, a win-win for both Explore Ocean, the city, as well as the merchants and the residents of the Balboa Village. It would be a parking structure that is open to the public. Currently, Explore Ocean has a 55-car underground garage beneath the building that would maintain, as well across the street. The rest of it is open to the public, and I think Mr. Kiff's description of it might be a typo when that said that we'll only have at least 55 cars. I believe it's at maximum 55 cars in that, so I wanted to correct that. Mike, on the motion to amend, we're okay with that to operate. We have no problem with that. I will say one thing about the gentleman here that talked tonight. Explore Ocean invested a couple of million dollars in this project to get to the entitlement phase, to hire the architects and all of the reports that are involved. And so it did that through donations as well. We're at the point now where we need to go back to the donors and show them that there's obviously about parking, and parking that benefits everybody, not just Explore Ocean. And so with that, I want to say, I hope that the council decides to proceed with the lease option deal. The parking structure, in terms of the length, is commensurate with how long the asset will live for. The asset becomes the city's at the end of it all. The parking structure that you build here for this facility will probably last at least 60 years, so I don't think that's pretty much the best practice of what we would do. And so I think this is something that I want to say thank you very much for the city to go down this path, and I believe it's a great project for everybody. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, I got a question for you. Just so everyone's clear, can you explain why Explore Ocean needs the option to lease as opposed to waiting until you get the project approved and get the lease then, just so we get it on the record?
Yes. The reason Explore Ocean needs parking is for fundraising purposes. Donors that will supply the funds for the majority of the project want to see two things. They want to see that you have your entitlements done, i.e. with the city, the Coastal Commission, any other regulatory authority. That includes a great deal of meetings, environmental impact reports, all of that is done. And the second part of that, the most important part, is that it's parking. I mean, these projects come down to parking, traffic, and zoning essentially. So with parking, that was something that we decided that we needed to be able to, with the city, to negotiate a deal so we can go back to our donor base, who's actually anxiously waiting to hear, have you cured the parking? Do you have your parking secured? Yes, we do, and we're proceeding with the entitlements with the city. With that achieved, that opens up larger sums of funds for the organization to raise money. So it's a linchpin to the project. And it doesn't bind the city, as you mentioned, to anything. The city could sell the land if it wanted to still. That's something that they decide they want to do, that they can. So I believe this is the best solution for the city and for Explore Ocean and for the residents and the merchants in the Balboa Village.
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions? No. I want to again thank the council people that were involved with all this, Aaron Hart for helping me with all the legal work, and Dave Kiff and all the staff. There's quite a few people here that were associated with this to get it to this point. I want to thank everybody.
Anyone else in the public like to speak on this item?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I thought the first speaker raised some very valid concerns about the city committing to this proposal. My comment is completely different. As the staff report indicates, not too long ago, the location we're talking about was a market. The idea of a market being there fit very nicely with the concept that we heard about this last summer in connection with the land use element update of having a city composed of self-contained residential villages where residents are able to access the services they want without having to drive a large or long distance. Bulldozing the market and turning it into a parking lot seems less in line with that since those residents now have to go further for the service that they could have got locally. The idea that we now need a parking structure at that location implies we have a new vision, as we heard earlier this evening, where we're not only not trying to localize traffic, but we're actually, the need for a parking structure means we're wanting to attract more cars from a longer distance coming to this location. This seems to me contrary to what we heard was a good idea not very long ago, and I'm wondering, maybe this is the wrong location for this attraction that we want to build. And I'm not sure I see it as a win-win for everybody, including the residents there, having still more traffic going along the streets that we have heard are already clogged and congested at the peak hour of the peak season of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Yes, I must ask, do we have a motion? We do. Motion in a second. Further comments?
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 24, please.
Good evening, mayor and members of city council. We'll move through this very quickly. This is requesting the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration for the Park Avenue Bridge over the Grand Canal. Most everyone's familiar with the location of the bridge connecting Little Balboa Island and the Big Island. Here's a current picture of the bridge. It was originally built in 1930. It's been patched, painted, rehabbed many times over. Structural engineers have definitively determined that it is functionally obsolete, which is a very technical way of saying it needs to be replaced. The Park Avenue, the replacement has many benefits. We've talked about these in past meetings, including improving traffic access, pedestrian access, and improved boat access underneath the bridge. And the city's also successful in securing 100% federal funding for it. I'm going to move quickly to the next slide, and I'll just kind of talk over some of the features. Again, it's replacing an 85-year-old bridge. The traffic lanes are slightly wider. They're moving from 10 feet wide to 11 feet wide. Sidewalks are going to be widened to a more comfortable width of 6 feet as opposed to 4 feet, and the number of bridge piles are reduced as well, too. And believe it or not, adding stairs to each corner of the bridge were an important feature that the residents really requested.
Before you leave that slide?
Yes.
I'm going to just jump to my question right now on it. I recognize the existing bridge has street lamps on it, but once again, in dealing with this concept of glare and this type of thing, and the residents on either side of that, why in the redesign of the building aren't wall washers used in the railing system to light the pedestrian ways and to spill onto the roadway, but not to provide glare for the neighborhood? Has that been considered?
You know, we specifically have not considered that, too, but along with many aspects of the project, we've taken, you know, votes and feedback from the residents. So that's something we can bring back to them and see what their preference is on that. We were just, the other main point was we were trying to keep the architectural character of that bridge there.
I don't know if you're suggesting removing the streetlights, but the residents want the streetlights as part of the character. Yeah.
All right. Here's a nice fun schematic for you. We'll move on. And so to construct this bridge, there's two ways of basically doing it, and one is via temporary bridge, and the other one is by building it in two halves. And so, you know, we've looked at it very closely. Our design team, who's here in the audience today, has looked at it. We've spoken to actual bridge contractors and determined that temporary bridge at Balboa Avenue is the best approach, you know? It provides the two lanes of traffic. It's the best solution for emergency access, and it reduces the overall construction time. And very simply put, it avoids the higher risk associated with trying to do two-stage construction. Yeah, another aerial photo of how some of the traffic would be using the temporary bridge along Balboa Avenue. The bridge, it's a temporary bridge itself, and again, this is explained in the environmental document, which we'll get to in just a second here, is a steel truss bridge. It's very similar to what the military uses in their applications in emergency situations. It's erected quickly and is very temporary in nature. Asphalt would be placed on the deck to make sure the roadway surface is smooth. And then I'll ask Greg Ramirez to go over some of the environmental points.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just real briefly here, the city contracted with RBF Consulting to prepare the initial study and several associated technical studies. As a result of all the analysis, there were several impacts that were identified, all of which could be mitigated to a level less than significant. The majority of those dealt with demolition and construction activities, and then also notable was a potential impact to eelgrass. And then there'll be further follow-up studies on the eelgrass impacts as we get closer to the construction. The draft was released for the required 30-day public review period, which lasted from early October to earlier November of this year. The city did receive six comment letters. We prepared responses to those comments, and none of the comments warranted changes to the findings of the draft initial study, MND, and nothing suggested that the document needed to be recirculated or renoticed. And based on this analysis, staff recommends adoption of the MND for the project.
Questions, staff?
Thank you, Greg. I'll just wrap it up here real quick. I'll just add, too, that over the last two years, we've held several different meetings regarding the project with the community. And as we get closer, we'll prepare additional outreach on the specifics to the island. After the approval of this mitigated negative declaration, we will resubmit our coastal development permit application, and I'll secure all of the other necessary resource permit applications and proceed towards final design. The goal is to be in construction this time next year and wrap things up by the end of That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Selig.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to really congratulate and thank the staff. When I first got on the city council, there had been an effort to rebuild this bridge that failed. I think Steve, I think you were part of that, and there was just a lot of acrimony on the island over it. So had to wait a few years to let things calm down, and I know Fong and Dave and Jeff Herdman from the Balboa Island Improvement Association, everyone worked really hard. We had so many community meetings on this, in the fire station. We met with all the neighbors. We met with the different island associations. Really, a lot of work went on it, a lot of public input into the design. We went back and forth on whether to build half a bridge at one time where the existing bridge is or go with the temporary bridge. Went back and forth on that. And although everyone isn't completely happy with the solution that we came up with, I think it's the most feasible way to approach it. I think it's a good solution. And there have been some comments on the circulation on coming up Marine Avenue, but if it doesn't work out as we planned, we can always come back and make adjustments on the circulation so we don't have congestion at Balboa and Marine Avenue. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I'd move that we, the action, and approve the mitigated negative declaration.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further council comments?
Yeah, it's always nice to use other people's money for a project like this. Good work on that, too.
And I'd like to open it for public hearing. Anybody from the public like to come down and speak on this? Please come on down and sit in the front row and be ready. Please.
Good evening. My name is John Ermentinger, and I'm the owner of 300 Grand Canal, which is one of the two immediate properties that currently exists on Little Balboa Island and will certainly be confronting the proposed temporary bridge as is. I'm here tonight to express my concerns regarding noise and light pollution, traffic congestion, and an already compounding parking dilemma. Furthermore, there is an economic impact. I currently reside in Shanghai, China, and so therefore, my residence is leased as a vacation property, which obviously goes towards support of many of the businesses in the area. While I understand that this temporary solution may in fact be the best solve in this particular case, I believe that the economic impacts and the quality of life impacts that my guests, my fellow neighbors, and myself and my family, who periodically come back to visit my property, has not been adequately addressed. I've written to six individuals, and I would like to thank Mr. Selig for returning my email and for adding his perspective relative to my challenge. email and for adding his perspective relative to my challenge. But I would like for the council to once more consider the sequential replacement of the bridge, and if you so choose, that the, that that isn't a satisfactory solution, that you at least consider the economic challenges that at least I will face in the process of over 10 months. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Rudy Baldoni. I live at 226 Grand Canal with my wife. That's at the corner of Grand Canal and Balboa Avenue. I submitted timely comments, which staff acknowledged, but I noticed that they weren't included in the staff report, so I decided to come here this evening to share with you the comments that I had shared with staff. I don't agree with the proposed temporary bridge and request that the staff and the City Council consider moving forward with the proposed Park Avenue replacement bridge by building the new bridge in place one half at a time. The additional two months that it will take the city to build the bridge in place is more equitable than the issues created by using a temporary bridge. The issues that draw me to this conclusion are as follows. The proposed temporary bridge will create new noise, congestion, and will not allow me or my neighbors the quiet use and enjoyment of our properties. Second, parking will be dramatically reduced with the loss of parking along Balboa Avenue and from construction work areas. Parking is already a problem on Balboa and Little Balboa Island with many renters on the island with four to six cars per household in a two-car household, or two-person household. Thirdly, the loss of use of our, and our neighbors' moorings and docks. Fourth, inadequate stacking for automobiles at Marine Avenue and Balboa Avenue, causing additional congestion at Bayside Drive and Pacific Coast Highway. Lastly, due to the lack of parking and noise created, my neighbors and I will lose the ability to rent our above-garage apartments and our homes. Lastly, I'd like the City Council to consider tabling this matter to some future time and to continue this matter. I think there are several issues which I've addressed and which John has addressed that still need to be resolved with staff, and most importantly, with the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Don Abrams.
You should use the other mic.
Much better, thank you. I'm Don Abrams. I live at 200 Grand Canal, which is directly adjacent to the current bridge. I can't complain I didn't know this day was coming. When I bought the house about a dozen years ago, the owner told me that she knew the bridge was going to be coming down, and that's why she was selling the house, and that if I bought it from her, I couldn't tell anyone about it. I should keep it a secret. I told her I was also a real estate broker, and I'd have to tell anyone who asked, but I ended up buying that house, so I knew this day was coming. A few comments that I, and I'm also a real estate broker on Balboa Island, and my office is about a block and a half from the temporary bridge. So I'll be impacted by everything that's going on, and like I said, I knew I was in for it, so I'm not complaining that the bridge is going to be redone. The original plan was going to be for the bridge to be sequentially repaired, which for the last few years, as Ed Selich knows, was the plan. Then apparently, many of the citizens on the little island were concerned about emergency vehicles getting there, and the tide shifted to the temporary bridge. I think the other reason that the tide shifted was because this was supposed to be a faster process. I believe we were told it was going to be eight to 10 months, doing it this way versus 10 to 12 sequentially. However, I just looked at this document tonight, and this says that it's going to be 12 to 15 months with the temporary bridge. So this is a big surprise to me. I think it's the first time I've seen that, and I'm wondering, where is the savings that we were supposed to get by having the temporary bridge? The second concern I have is traffic circulation on Marine Avenue. I wrote a letter to the city, and they kindly responded that they didn't think there was any significant impact on traffic. And as anyone who's been on the island, and particularly for those of us who work there and live there, traffic is a daily problem every day of the year. However, this particular traffic causing the 250 residents who live on the little island to make their first left to go across the bridge right next to Starbucks is going to be a major, major tie-up, and I can't imagine emergency vehicles, police, or fire would ever be able to negotiate that the way this is being done. So I made a simple suggestion, which I guess was ignored, that if we're going to go ahead and do it this way, which I don't think is optimal, but if we're going to do it this way, we should force traffic coming over the bridge to make a right on the alley along the North Bayfront, and then make Onyx one way, the opposite direction from where it goes, and make Marine in that block one way, only going off the island. That way, traffic, by the time it got to Balboa, would have several blocks to get there. People could turn off in other directions, and I think we could, and I'm sure there are other ways of doing this, but apparently they've all been ignored, and saying we can do it later, I don't think is the solution. We could fix this now before we go forward with the project. Thank you. And also, I'd like to thank all of you. I know this is a lot of your last meeting. I've interacted with many of you, and I want to thank you for doing a great job for us.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
If so, a question about the sequential bridge. So is there time savings? Is there a convenience savings? Is there a safety savings? Why are we doing it this way?
There's definitely all of those things. There's especially safety and emergency access savings, too. If we were to, you know, build it a half at a time, and you'd have a one-lane in-direction, one-lane out, a very complicated signal system to get cars in and out, one in one direction, if you can imagine this, and then you can't see over the bridge as you're going across, that's a real safety issue. It can be done, but it's a major safety issue. Now, we slice a bridge that was built 1930 in half, that's only 10-foot wide, and try to get, you know, fire trucks through there and back and forth, too. There's, there's a lot of risks associated with that, too. And we've heard from a lot of residents that they're not interested in hearing having that type of risk for emergency access. In terms of construction timeline savings, it's definitely quicker, and by about two months is what we've estimated and what we've gotten some feedback on the contractor, from contractors, to build this as, you know, one in one spot at one time. It's a tight location, so it is a very slow process, though, too, because they don't have much of an area to lay down equipment and materials and things like that, too. There is some, we put that in a timeline, 12 to 15 months, just to be clear, and a little bit of safety buffer there, too, because we're still waiting on other agency permits and some of the other rules that may be dictated for, to us, as well as we would fully want to build the temporary bridge in place and have that operational and have all the bugs worked out with that. And that'll take another month or two before we actually bend the heavy demolition work at Park Avenue.
Okay, well, there's, obviously, in a place like the island, there is no easy way to do a project like this. I mean, there's going to be some pretty big impacts. You said that there's going to be asphalt over the temporary bridge. Will that help with the noise at all? I mean, can you put like a rubberized thing or something that quiets?
Yes, that's the purpose of the asphalt, to make it quieter.
Okay.
Isn't the, another advantage of the temporary bridge that you'll be able to use this section of Park Avenue between the Grand Canal and Marine Avenue for staging and material storage where you otherwise wouldn't have that space available?
That's correct, yes.
Do you have a structural analysis? Will half the bridge stand up?
You know, as an engineer, I like to say we could do anything, and we could shore it up, and we could put piles, and we could do all kinds of different things, but is it practical? And, and really, with the narrowness of that road being only 10 feet wide there, and then you need to build a safety barrier and different things like that, too.
I mean, it seems to me that when you cut that bridge in half, you've absolutely lost your seismic capability of any lateral, lateral movement.
Yeah, which is the number-one issue being brought up in the, in the safety report by the engineers, is the seismic strength of that bridge.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yes.
Don Abrams mentioned the section of Onyx between Marine Avenue and Grand Canal. There's a Starbucks right there. It's a place people go to park. How does that figure into this scenario?
Terms of the potential de-
Traffic flow.
Yeah, I mean, so I think that goes back to, once we, you know, put in this, this temporary bridge, too, we can make some adjustments, and if we feel that we need to reroute some traffic, you know, based on some safety concerns, we can do that.
Yeah, how that's going to work, and if parking's going to remain, and I suppose you kind of have to test it out and see how it goes and make adjustments if necessary.
Could we approve a drive-up window at Starbucks?
Planings here, we could talk.
All right. Pleasure of the council. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, question, second. Let's call the council.
All right. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 25.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this item is back to you from two weeks ago. There is an amendment to it at the request of, suggestion of Mr. Petros, saying that the change in the Consumer Price Index, or 2 percent, whichever less be the change for the contract from year to year. There is a document in front of you that includes clarification on that, and if you do adopt this, we'll consider that part of the record.
Any questions of staff?
Move the item.
Second.
Right. I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. Please vote.
With Councilmember Petros voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Item number 26.
Mr. Mayor, I would just note the importance of these resurfacing projects, particularly in the area that abuts Mr. Selich's district and my district on San Miquin Hills and San Miguel, and all of the work on Campus Drive by the airport, so I would move the item.
Second. All right, it's moved in a second. Would anyone like a staff report? Like to open a public hearing? Anybody here in the public like to comment on item number 26? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 27.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this proposal is to authorize the Finance Director to, with your blessing, direct the city to work with Calpers to do what's called a new fresh start. In just short summary, it would speed up the amortization period for our unfunded liability to a point of 19 years. There is a cost information in your packet. We do, we could do a staff presentation if you'd like. The Finance Committee heard this in great detail just a few short days ago.
And they're making a recommendation of one option.
We're making a recommendation of the 19-year fresh start because we believe that's sensible, has the most bang for the buck, and still allows the city to accomplish some other goals.
As was reported in the Finance Committee's report earlier this evening. Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item and just make a couple of quick comments along the way.
Thank you.
You know, part of the Finance Committee's responsibilities have been to make sure that the city's finances and the major strategies for the city's finances are correctly prosecuted to maintain financial discipline and the city's very high credit rating. And so this is part of an ongoing process to be considering this. The city actually, this is our second time out doing a fresh start. We did, we took one two years ago for a similar kind of benefit on the city's interest expense. This fresh start assures a prudent but required dollar-average approach to eliminating the unfunded actuarial liability over 19 years. That's 11 years faster than the maximum 30-year allowance under Calpers. We get maximum bang for the buck. I calculated $5.6 dollars of savings and interest expense for every extra dollar spent in the first five years to make this happen. Total savings of $129 million. We, to select, the question might be, well, should we select 19 years, or 15 years, or 10 years? We had asked that all of those options be analyzed, but it's very clear that in addition to the fact that the 19-year program allows for the best bang for the buck, if you will, it also allows for the continuation of the city's facilities financing plan for all known projects with no additional debt issuance. And so it comes in the context of continuing fiscal discipline as it relates to the city's capital improvements program. Therefore, I do want to move to adopt the 19-year fresh start program. I also include in my motion to implement this immediately rather than to wait until the 15, 16 fiscal year, and in conjunction with starting immediately, move to amend the 14, 15 budget to provide for the additional $6.6 million year-one cost. I believe it's 6.6, is that right, Don? Year-one cost. So we'd have to amend the budget to provide for that expense hit in the budget. However, to offset that expense hit by assigning $6.6 million of the currently estimated $10.2 million 13, 14 budget surplus to fund the year-one cost. I believe we're enabled to make a motion to do all of that by virtue of the noticing of this item and the fact that it was contained in the staff report that there would be budget impact if we were to do something like that.
Second.
Moved in second. Councilman Curry.
Well, first of all, I just want to commend Councilmember Henn for his leadership in this area over the years. We're going to miss him on this. The Register today endorsed this measure, this strategy by the city, but they missed some very salient facts. As Mike mentioned, we, this is the second time we've done that. They suggested we had currently a 30-year amortization. In fact, it's 21 years and 24 years respectively, because we've already reamortized our pension debt at a savings of $130 million. This is on top of that. We've already reduced our workforce by more than 100 employees, which has had ripple effects of reducing our pension costs. We've already capped these legacy systems and introduced second and third-tier systems much faster than many other jurisdictions so that any new employee is in a lower-cost pension system. We have negotiated with our employees in a positive and collaborative way, where our employees now pay more than $7.5 million of our annual pension costs themselves. That's more than any of our comparable and surrounding cities in Orange County in terms of the percentage of salary that they pay into the pension system. And we have continued to run the city more effectively and efficiently during the course of doing all of this to preserve the quality of services that we enjoy. So this is another very, very important step in reducing our pension costs, getting this under control, but it's in a continuum of steps that the City Council has taken over the past several years in a leadership role in Orange County to keep these costs low and affordable here in the city. So I am very proud to support our Finance Committee recommendation in moving forward to do this.
Councilman Petros.
Yes, Mayor Hill. I, too, would just commend Councilmember Henn's leadership, discipline, and stewardship of the city finances. This is the second time we have done this, all in an effort to save the taxpayer dollar. There were a lot of claims made during the election cycle, and that's probably why they call it silly season. I don't buy into any of it. This city is managed very, very well, and now with this reamortization and the reduction in the time period, we have the opportunity to save $129 million for a simple added upfront of 24, the greatest bang for the buck. But there is a, given a take here. By virtue of accelerating this schedule, we are now saying that we can continue to conduct the vision, complete the vision the public wishes for the city of Newport Beach, including the parks, the landscaping, the road resurfacing, all of the capital projects that the city and the citizens desire, want, and expect. But there was a tipping point where if we go to 15 years, if we go to 10 years, we compromise the ability to see that vision forward. So this does reflect the best of both. We are getting a cost savings on our pension. We are being responsible with the tax- We are being responsible with the taxpayer dollar, at the same time fulfilling the wishes of the citizens for a beautiful and enlivened Newport Beach. So I support this effort as well. I should also commend staff for their leadership in this recommendation. You know, our staff does a very good job without the guidance, actually, of the Finance Committee in analyzing and putting forth these kinds of ideas. And so, Dan, you're to be commended as well for identifying this alternative here.
I'd like to open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. I have to apologize, I had to leave the Finance Committee meeting before the public comments time came up at the end of that discussion. So I'm going to bore you with the two comments that I intended to make there. I'm looking at page three of the staff report. At the bottom of that, it says the objective of this is to accelerate the payments of the UAL from the current 30-year plan. Yet we've heard three times that this is our second fresh start and we thought we were not on a 30-year plan, if I'm understanding it. I'm looking at the paragraph higher up on this third page about the impact of the asset smoothing methodology. And it says there that in 2013, just last year, we tried to do a fresh start to a 21-year and a 26-year payoff period, but due to circumstances beyond our control, it hasn't quite worked out that way, and we're no closer to paying off things than we were when we did that. So the question is, do we have any confidence that this new 19-year plan is going to actually pan out to be a 19-year plan since what we tried last year didn't quite work? Second comment I have is that the Finance Committee, a couple of meetings before that, I understood the staff was working on a pension primer, or primer, however you pronounce that, that was going to attempt to explain, I don't know if it's even possible, in plain English what these pension issues are for the public to understand. And I'm just curious, since we have another item about pensions here, what the status of that might be. Thank you.
Let me take a quick stab at that, Dan. You can fill in the blanks. The reason why we went backwards is that Calpers changed the consideration of mortality tables and some other things here. And so while we certainly would have gotten the benefit of that first fresh start, we went backwards by some $80 million in our unfunded liability simply because of changes in actuarial assumptions for analyzing this. And so we did go backwards. And no, there is no guarantee that we won't go backwards again. But that doesn't mean that this isn't a good decision standing alone to go forward with it. So there was one other question, and now I've lost track.
He mentioned the pension primer as well.
Oh, yeah, we did do that, and it was issued. So, Dan, maybe you can fill us in on, I think it was put on the city's website, wasn't it?
The pension primer that Dave and I worked on ended up as a component of the city's performance plan. So it's in the back of the city's budget currently.
Okay, all right. So it's there. We can get you a copy if you'd like. They do do as good a job as possible for plain English. Unfortunately, actuaries never speak in plain English, so.
Any further comment from anyone from the public? Ain't none, I'll bring it back to the council. Further comments from the council? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Item number 28.
Just briefly, before you consider this item, the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney will need to recuse themselves since we're the subject of the proposed amendments.
Who's going to take notes? Oh, okay.
Who's our acting attorney?
You get the B-team. Okay. Well, I guess the item before you tonight is the same item that you addressed in the study session. For each, the third amended and restated employment agreements, each for Dave Kiff, city manager, Aaron Harp, city attorney, and Leilani Brown, our city clerk. I think you're fairly familiar with those, and if you'd like to just discuss what those issues might be. I'm kind of thrown into this at the last minute as well.
I don't think, we didn't expect you to give a staff report on this, Steve.
Councilman Henn.
Okay. So the way this works is that City Council is responsible for assessing the performance and the compensation and contract changes for the three council appointees, which include the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney. We've been very determined over the years to perform our duties in this respect in an exemplary way, and I think we've succeeded. These performance reviews and contract changes and so forth for the past eight years have been conducted in accordance with a well-defined process adopted by this council. That process includes a written performance evaluation that takes light, or takes view of the performance of defined duties and annual goals for each of the incumbents. Following completion of such a performance review, council then considers compensation changes based upon, most importantly, the job performance rating just completed, as well as the objective market survey information that council instructs staff to provide, as well as council's adopted compensation philosophy, which includes reference to median compensation, which really should be interpreted in terms of second and third quartile compensation, not just a point estimate of median, as well as our objective, the stated objective in our compensation philosophy, to achieve a 50% pension contribution by our employees toward their overall pension expense. So we take account of all of that and try to conclude what's an appropriate change in compensation. And then thirdly, we take consideration of contract changes. That needs to take into account changes in employment law and best practices, the appropriate consistent consistency in the form of the contract between the three appointed positions, and to maintain a balance between protection of the city's rights and fairness to the employee. So we do all of that every year for each appointee as a matter of intention. This year is a little unique in that there are four members of council finishing their terms. And it is this council that in fact set the goals and should properly measure the performance of the three appointees. And so we did accelerate the process and handle it now all three at once at this time. I think it's also fully appropriate that this council conclude as to compensation changes and contract changes because, as I pointed out earlier, one of the most important decision points in compensation changes has to do with performance evaluation. And the newly seated council would be ill-equipped to make that performance evaluation. So all of this hangs together. It's a consistent process that needs to be finished in a consistent way. So with all of that, then, council in an accelerated fashion has considered compensation and contract changes and has directed me as the designated negotiator to execute compensation changes and negotiations with the incumbents in accordance with council's direction, which I have been able to do, and therefore would like to report out the final changes associated with the contracts and compensation. As it relates to the performance evaluations, all three of the incumbents were judged to have been at least fully satisfactory, and in some cases more so, in terms of their performance. The recommended compensation changes for Leilani Brown and Aaron Harp were certainly appropriate to the performance ratings and placed them at approximately median comp. And I'll specify those changes in a moment. For Dave Kiff, the recommended change will place him still in the third quartile, that is below median, on his compensation. Although Mr. Kiff's performance rating more than justifies total pay at or above median, council felt that correcting this all in one stroke with a raise of over 11% would have been imprudent. Therefore, council is recommending that, in the event Mr. Kiff's performance continues to be satisfactory next year, that Mr. Kiff's compensation be increased to at least median next year. And I want to make sure that it's clear as we're taking the minutes here that that recommendation for next year is clearly stated in the minutes. So therefore, to review then the finalized changes in compensation, the agreed-upon change that has been negotiated for Aaron Harp is a raise of $9,200. That's an increase of 4.13% to a new salary of $232,000. And the date for the merit per diem associated with that in the contract blank is September the 6th. With regard to, and the per diem amount is indicated in a red line of the employment agreement that is now available to the public. With regard to Leilani Brown, and a raise of $5,000 has been approved. That's an increase of 3.65% to a new salary of $142,000. And the date of the merit per diem for Leilani would be November the 15th, and the per diem amount is indicated in the red line contract. For Mr. Kiff, his raise is $14,250. That's an increase of 6.15% as opposed to the 11% that would have taken him to median. And the new salary associated with that raise of 6.15% is $246,000. There's no need for a date for a merit per diem in his case because his raise is effective with the date of this meeting. I do want to also point out that as it relates to contract changes, in all three cases, the contracts provide for the incumbents to increase their contribution to their pension expense. I believe in all three cases that will take them to the highest level of pension contribution of any city in Orange County for those positions. And they will also, I believe, take them darn close perhaps to the 50% contribution in our compensation philosophy. So while these raises are right and appropriate and significant, they are partially offset by additional pension contributions such that the take-home pay is approximately a point and a half, one and a half percentage points, I should say, lower than the approved increase. So with all of that, and perhaps a little more explanation than we might have otherwise provided, I think this is appropriate. I should point out one other thing. It has been almost three years since Dave Kiff has received a raise. The last time that he was up for a raise, council was prepared to grant him one. However, that raise was deferred at Mr. Kiff's request, pending completion of some compensation studies that were strategic in nature for the, for all employees, but most importantly for the key employees. The completion of those compensation studies has been delayed. They still are not complete. That was the principal reason for the delay in his compensation increase. So we are at least partially redressing that issue with tonight's change. And with that, then, I will move that we approve the red-lined contract changes incorporating the changes in compensation that I've described, and authorize the mayor to execute the new contracts promptly following this meeting.
I'll second that. I had, as we all have probably received, several emails saying that we should defer, make a suggestion but not make a decision. But I thought that your arguments about why we should make the decision in terms of the raise and vote on it were persuasive, so I will second your motion.
Further comments or questions by council? Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Like to open it up? Public comment?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As I said this afternoon, and I continue to believe, it would be appropriate and valuable for this council to make its recommendations and to defer the decision to the new council, which will be seated in December. But as to the substance of what has been said, I wanted to point out that while it has been three years since Mr. Kiff's contract was, compensation was changed in his contract, if I'm reading these redlined versions properly, the city clerk's contract was last reviewed in March of this year. So we're talking about just eight months. And so the raise of 3.6% over eight months is more than it might seem. Second point I wanted to make, and I can't recall if I have done this in past years or not, I'm a little uncomfortable with these merit adjustments that are being put into these contracts. They've been there in the past. In effect, we're giving these employees a bonus, as I understand it, retroactive raise back to a certain date. In one case, just a few days; in the other case, a couple of months. In my opinion, those bonuses, if it's not clear in the contract that there is an expectation of a bonus for doing something in the contract, I think they conflict with California Constitution, specifically Article 11, Section 10A, that says that a local government body may not grant extra compensation to a public officer or employee after the service has been rendered. It seems to me that we contracted with the employees to provide a service at a certain cost, and that provision in the Constitution is saying we should not be going back and paying them more for something that they have already done under the existing contract. Perhaps Mr. Badham would want to weigh in on that, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to comment on this item? Ain't none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments?
I sort of doubt Mr. Badham would want to weigh in on that question, but I will tell you that the form of these contracts has been reviewed. Mr. Harp reviewed the contract forms for Mr. Kiff and Ms. Brown. And outside council has reviewed the form of contract for Mr. Harp. We're quite confident that what we are proposing here is in fact legal under the California Constitution.
Councilman Curry.
Just before we vote, I'd like to say a couple of things about the people here because of the outstanding job that they do year in and year out to make this the kind of city that we all want it to be. And Dave Kiff in particular, since he came on as city manager in 2009, has engineered a reduction in the workforce of our city of more than 100 people while not reducing services at all. He's presided over the implementation of a substantial capital improvement program that has updated our infrastructure for the next five generations and provided outstanding public facilities that are enjoyed by thousands of people on a daily basis. He has restored the morale in the city. He has increased our water quality. He has improved our traffic flow. And I think he has done an exemplary job of leading this community. And I think we all need to appreciate that. Every time we talk about compensation, everybody sort of gets focused on the number and doesn't really think about the value for the job provided. And I for one am very convinced about the high value of the job. And I, for one, am very convinced about the high value of the work provided by Dave and by Aaron and by Leilani.
Yeah, I think you have to look no further than the extension of the John Wayne Airport Agreement. We have a situation now where our community remains protected in that regard. The curfew remains intact, and I can tell you that it was a very complicated and difficult and significant endeavor to, that the city attorney and the city manager was able to negotiate and execute. So major quality-of-life issue for our community.
I would certainly echo all of those, all of those comments. As I have said many times, good policy alone doesn't get you any place unless you have the staff that can carry it out. We have a city manager form of government. We only retain the services as council of three individuals, and the city manager has the responsibility of hiring everyone else. And it's through that job, through the staff that he has built, the staff that he has motivated, that we've made the accomplishments that we've made. At least, this is one council person that's extremely pleased with the progress that we've made.
With that, any other questions, any other comments? I would ask council to vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side. Do we have a council member that would like to?
Yes, I know it's late, but I would like us to reconsider the issue from last week, two weeks ago, previous meeting, on the tree trimming contract with Great Scott. I think that the letter that we got shows that there was a great deal of information that wasn't available in the staff report, and I think that, since he was not aware of the meeting, that he should have the opportunity to explain why we shouldn't put the contract out for rebid, but should continue it with him. So that would be my motion.
All right, we have a motion for reconsideration. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion limited to the topic of reconsideration?
Well, I would just note, I made the motion that we put this back out to bid, and that's the issue at hand, is whether we should bid. It's not whether or not Great Scott's doing a good job or not. I met with them. I think they're doing a fine job. They're an excellent candidate for what we have. But what we discovered as part of this process is that we did not have good quantities and therefore the ability to make a good evaluation of costs when we bid this a year ago, and it's even worse now, that we're off by 50% in the quantities and the contracts that we have, which is why we did a major budget adjustment, out of fairness, frankly, last time. And so I'm not at all convinced that we've made this decision based on adequate or accurate information in terms of comparing the two bidders, which is why I think we ought to have a process where we have good comparable data from both firms that allow us to really make a decision about whether or not one is lower cost than the other.
I would agree with Councilman Curry in that, his comments, because the issue is that the city did not correctly anticipate the volumes. And so now they, they want to simply, the recommendation was to simply continue the price per unit that was bid, and the basic concept is that as you get more volume, as you get more units, that your fixed costs spread out over more, so potentially less cost per unit, and the city could achieve and share in some of those savings. So it makes complete sense that, given the, the volume that we're talking about, that we would rebid the whole thing and potentially get a lower cost per volume and give any firm the opportunity to compete, not just the prior one and this one, but open it to any tree trimming firm. So I don't, I see the root problem here is that the volumes were not anticipated accurately, and there's this gross increase in units, and that it should be appropriately reopened for bidding.
That was actually my identical reason. The motion had two parts to it. One was that staff had asked the vendor to provide additional service under the existing contract and under the existing unit price. They provided that service that was brought to us after the fact. They were due that money, and part of that motion was to provide the funding for the work that they had done. But the other part of the motion was to, whether or not to consider reopening the project to a new request for proposal, and under the same basis, I bid public work. When the volume is greater, the unit price goes down. And had we had the proper volume in there, we should have received a better value from all of the bidders. And so the only way to test that is to go back to, to bid. The reality is, is that that probably can't happen for a period of three to four months as the process would go on, but the direction to staff in that motion was to, was to go to bid. So I would not be in support of reconsider.
Mayor, yeah, I originally was in favor of the motion, and, but since then, have had a chance to understand better what was involved with the original RFP. Although there was some additional work done under this contract that was not contemplated at the time of the bid, my understanding is that that work was done in recompense for work that was not done under the prior contract, and that it may well be the case that the ongoing expected volumes under this contract are not greatly different than the original RFP, once these transitional issues are sorted out. Now it may be the case that, in fact, they are, and, but my concern here is, and it may well be, that ultimately it is the right decision to do another RFP here. My concern is, though, that we should make that decision based upon careful, well-described information, because it's, when we ask people to bid on a 10-year contract and then decide to rebid one year into the contract, that can put a real chilling effect on other similar kinds of contracting for the city, outsourcing contracting. And we, we better be real sure that, of our reasons. And so that's where I'm coming from, is that I think we need to be very sure about this before we go about rebidding. And so that's why I'm in support of the motion.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that we're, we may come to the same decision, but I just don't think we had a very good presentation and very good information, and would like to get that information out before we take the next step.
Although you and I won't be there to vote on that.
Probably, yeah. That's right.
Further comments? I need some guidance, since this is an item for reconsideration. Is there public testimony expected on this or required?
No, because you're basically just voting to re-agendize it at a future meeting. So you can go ahead and vote on the motion for reconsideration. If it passes, then we'll re-agendize it and bring it back.
Motion fails. You'll bring it back?
No. No. Motion is to reconsider.
We'll bring back a bid. Gotcha.
So if you, yeah, if you want, if you want the motion to come back for reconsideration, you vote yes. If you're pleased with the vote that was taken, you vote.
Yeah, and my understanding of the motion was made, there was, there was two components to it. You're only looking to, it basically was to approve the amendment to the contract, conditioned on it going back out for being rebid. You're only looking to have the, conditioned on it going, coming back to a rebid, brought back. Is that correct?
So voting for brings it back.
Right. So if you vote for the motion for reconsideration, it comes back on the agenda. If you vote against it, it doesn't. Why don't we open it up for public comment?
Would anybody like a public comment on this?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmen. Giving us an opportunity to speak about this again. I know it's late, and I'll, I'll be brief. I worked quite a bit in the last few days with both the city manager and the arborist, and I just want you to know that their intent for the rest of this year is to do very, very little more trimming and do mostly planting for the, for the, between now and June. So if we met, the, the challenge with measuring this contract is that this has been a, a, this is bridged over, the transition over two different fiscal years. So as Leslie had said, we cleaned up last year's trimming, in which was, which was significantly additional work. So there was about 4,000 extra trees we trimmed in last year's money. This fiscal year, which started in July, we've only done about 10,000 trees, and we're only planning on trimming another 6,000 or 7,000 trees this year. So we will be well within what the, what the bid spec was and what the budget is, and the new budget, from my understanding, will be back down to 1.3 million, you know, going forward, if this is a one-time for the 1.8, to do the work that was the catch-up work from the past. So after speaking with both, you know, with, with the city arborist and with the supervisor, they were in agreement that the rest, for the, for this fiscal year, there'll be very little trimming left, but mostly planting, and we will definitely land for the, on the fiscal year budget to be 1.3 from July of this year till June of next year. Our recommendation would be, you know, let us finish one, at least one fiscal year, and then, and do a study on this, and at least then you've got, instead of it being a transition and a bridge between two years, you have one actual true year to be able to run the data from the beginning of the fiscal year till the end of it. So we would hope that you guys would consider at least that, and then, and then maybe put it out to, to take a look at it at that point for review. I do appreciate you guys, you know, taking another look at this. Any questions I can answer for you guys?
Questions? Anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item? Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Further comments?
Can I make one more comment, please?
Hey. One of the things that is kind of a challenge on this is, when it was put out to bid, it was, it was, it was a very long-term contract, and one of the agreements in the contract was that we would read GPS every single tree spot in the, in the, in the city, which is over 40,000 between vacant sites and actual sites. The typical cost for that is about $3 per tree, so we actually spent about $125,000 this year, re-GPSCing, and we've, we've given that to the city. We amortized it over 10 years, thinking it would cost, you know, $12,000, $13,000 a year, and if we only have a one-year contract, it's a big piece of swallow, you know, $125,000 that was, when 10 years ago, is expectation that would be a 10-year contract. So that's one more thing to consider, and as well as buying over a million dollars worth of equipment, you know, to be able to manage this project, thinking that we had a, you know, we're financing that we have 10 years to, to, you know, pay that off. So something to consider as well. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
All right.
Just seemed like when the city started trimming trees, it couldn't stop. It just kept trimming, thousands more than in the contract.
Please vote.
With councilmembers Petros, Curry, Daigle, and Mayor Hill voting no, the motion carries. I mean, motion fails. My apologies, motion fails. I got it. Thank you.
I, in adjourning this evening, would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of an individual that we've lost, Marion Knott. And Marion passed away on November 13 at her home in Newport Beach. She was the youngest daughter of Walter and Cornelia Knott, four children. Marion was born on April 22, 1922, and raised on the family's Buena Park farm. She spent her early years helping to sell produce at the roadside stand and waitressing in the family restaurant, I might add, with my mother. As the nature of the family business changed, so did her responsibilities. Marion and her siblings helped their parents transform the family produce farm, berry stand, and restaurant into Knott's Berry Farm themed park. Each sibling eventually had a role in its operations, and Marion became responsible for park development. She traveled the globe to check out new attractions and prototype rides. The Knott's family sold the park in 1997. Today, Knott's Berry Farm attracts more than 5 million visitors each year. Philanthropy was also important to Marion. A recipient of the Lifetime Achievement Award on Orange County's National Philanthropic Day of 2010, she generously donated time and financial support to a number of local nonprofits. Among them, she issued the Challenge Grant to help bring the Marion Knott Nursing Education Center at Hogue Hospital into fruition. She also supported Chapman University as a trustee, and threw financial gifts towards the school's Film Marion Knott Studios, an endowment for filmmaking in residence program, and for Chapman's Conservatory of Music. Marion Knott is survived by her husband, Anthony Monapot Pert, I'm sorry, her son, Daryl Anderson, her daughter Diane, four grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. We do stand adjourned.[1771.87][1771.87][music]